Steve Biddle, your sheriff. Of course, I know all of you now. At one time, I didn't know a couple of you, but I do now. Just to give you a quick review. Oh, sorry, page 92 you want to turn to in your book. Okay, this year, not asking for anything new. It's basically the way it was last year. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. We're good? Okay. Now, I'd like to introduce the honor and privilege of introducing Sheriff Beth Arthur, Arlington County Sheriff's Office, and also Paul Larson, Colonel, Arlington County Sheriff's Office also. She will be here to answer any questions you might have on the jail or the operations.
And if I could just jump in with a quick introduction as well. I just want to note for council, council is aware that we did have the opportunity to take a jail, a tour of the jail last week. Councilmember Duncan joined us, as well as Chief Gavin, Marilyn Keaton, and several others on the police and sheriff staff. And I want to thank the sheriff for the opportunity to take that tour of the facility. It was my first time to see how the facility operates.
And we hope it's your last.
Thank you. I hope so, too. I will say, just at the outset, that this relationship is very important to us. It's one that we work very closely with the Arlington County Sheriff, both with our sheriff's department, but also with our police department. That relationship of making an arrest, and then going through the magistrate process, and then handing a, either someone who's been arrested to the custody of the Arlington County Detention Center is a very important one for the city. And that relationship also with our court system, with the jail co-located with the court system, is very effective for us as well. We have had a number of discussions over the past two years, really, about our contractual relationship. And I think tonight, the real focus on this, plus our discussion on the fire services, is really to talk about what is in the budget, the services that we get with the number that's in the budget. And there may be discussions about some of those, or questions about some of those larger discussions we've been having, but I think the focus tonight is what is in the budget and the service level that we get with that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shields, and thank you, Sheriff Biddle. I appreciate the opportunity to come in to talk to you all, and for those of you that weren't able to come on the detention facility tour, I'm always happy to bring people through the jail, to talk about what we do and how we operate the Arlington Detention Facility. So if some other opportunity works better for you, please feel free to reach out and let me know. I think it helps you understand what we're doing in Arlington and how we operate the jail. As you all, I'm sure, are aware, we started a contract with Falls Church back in 1993, and the county management and finance, working with Falls Church, came up with a contract and, I guess, daily rate, however it was worked out. The new contract actually would, in lieu of using an annual average daily population, would actually use an actual daily population, which really, I think, is to your benefit because it, to actually ensure that you're paying for the inmates that are incarcerated, which, of course, you were before, but it was used sort of as a more broader number than actual individuals incarcerated. We are, our contract works over a 24-hour window, so if somebody's arrested and brought into booking, and they get committed to jail, it's only for inmates that get committed to jail, not for anybody that might get arrested and not use a dip charge, a drunken public charge. Those individuals are not somebody that we would charge the city for. We just house them until they are sober and can leave the facility. So, just so we're clear on that, it's in our, we want to continue making sure that we have a good relationship working with y'all. We've worked on this new proposed contract over the last couple of years, and use the state compensation board's annual daily cost report to guide us to where we came up with the contractual number. And I think one of the things that we've spent a lot of time talking about is, are those costs. As I was pointing out to Mr. Shields in our discussions, the jail is the most expensive building that a community builds, and it is the most expensive building that we operate. It costs Arlington about $67,000 a year to incarcerate somebody, and we're spending about $19,000 a year to educate our children. So, there's a lopsidedness there I recognize as a parent of kids in our schools in Arlington. You know, I understand that it's a scary cost. It is to us as well, but it is, we're mandated by state law, the types of, the security that we have to provide because we have to have a local jail that operates like a maximum security prison because we hold the whole gamut of somebody that gets arrested on a drunken public charge, all the way up to somebody that could be incarcerated for capital murder. So, I think that's sort of, in a nutshell, where we came up with the current proposed contract. We do run, you know, operate, obviously, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and so those operating costs are high. We feed, clothe, educate, provide a lot of services in our facility. We run a direct supervision jail in Arlington. And for those of you that aren't familiar with that, that means that we have a staff member in every housing unit with inmates 24 hours a day versus the old linear-style jail. I tell anybody that comes to work for me now, this is not Mayberry RFD, nor is this the Green Mile. So we have a staff person present all the time with inmates. That means that we're running the facility, not, you know, that we're there for, you know, two or three minutes. Every 30 minutes, we're there with them all the time. And so it's a safer way to run the facility, and I think it's a more progressive way to run the facility. I think it's, I think we run a really, really good jail. And I think that, I'm very proud of what the men and women do every day that work in the Arlington County Detention Facility. I think they're very well-trained. They feel very comfortable with the job that they do. They treat everybody that comes in our jail with dignity and respect, which is something that I demand them to do because everybody that's incarcerated is somebody's brother, sister, mother, father, aunt, uncle, son, daughter, and I think that that is what we should be doing when we run or work in the jail. One of the other things I just want to highlight on, we do, direct supervision then does mean that we hold inmates accountable. So if they have an employment position while they're incarcerated, like working in the kitchen, it's their responsibility to get up and go to work every day, just like it's yours and my responsibility to get up and go to work every day. We do require everybody that's incarcerated to either participate in programs, either through, we do GED programs, we do English as a Second Language, parenting classes, substance abuse, significant substance abuse programs, and we provide a lot of mental health services in our facility. And so they have to participate in programs, or they have to have a job, or they're going to be in a unit that pretty much is very boring and provides them with, you know, little opportunity to watch television. We don't run television all day long on whatever they want to watch. They have to watch educational television during the day if they're not participating in programs. So, those are things that are happening for anybody that's incarcerated in the facility so we can try to help make sure that we're providing them with tools so when they leave the facility, they're not going to come back to visit us. That's our goal. I'm not exactly sure sort of what the rest of the format is, if we want to talk specifics about the contract, or if you all want to ask questions, Mr. Shields, this is a little different format for me than what we do in Arlington. I would also note that part of the contractual services that we do, for instance, if we have an inmate that, once they're convicted and sentenced, just so you all know, the state is not necessarily taking their inmates. They've closed down 10 prisons over the last several years in budget, because of budget issues. And so that means that they're leaving their prisoners in our local jails longer. That means you have people that are staying there longer. That means, you know, we do as well in Arlington. I think right now, we have three people that are totally out of compliant of the inmates that you all have, and two others that haven't actually gotten out of their window for the state to be out of compliant. But, for the most part, if they're not sentenced to more than two years, they're not going anywhere, they're staying in a local jail. And what does that do? That puts the burden and cost back on you as the local government, as it does to Arlington and every other local government across the Commonwealth. I personally have been very, very actively involved in working on issues in Richmond where they are putting, where things that they do in Richmond make a negative, put a negative impact back on the local government when it comes to running the jail or sheriff's operations. I currently serve as president of our association, so I spent a lot of time running up and down the road to Richmond, and I serve on a lot of committees to make sure that they're not dumping back on us, if you will, any more than is at least possible. As much as I can do, I do a lot of begging and grovelling, as I say, on a regular basis in Richmond, and we try to make sure that they're minimizing those. But some of the things that we do do for you, in the same respect that we do for ourselves, is as soon as an inmate is out of compliant, and there's somebody that we, the state will take, we actively try to make sure the state comes and takes them, so that we're not burdening anybody with those costs.
From a budgetary perspective, the, if you do look on page 95, the budget projection for 2014 is $977,428. And that is, that's a number that is, it's about $150,000 increase from what we've budgeted in the current year. It is a number that really goes from finance department to finance department. It's a number that our finance department gets from Arlington County Office of Management and Budget, and it's based on what we're seeing in terms of actuals in the current fiscal year and a projection based on that. The formula that this budget is based on is the formula that is in the agreement that is basically sitting on my desk right now, that the Arlington County Board has indicated that it's ready to sign. It takes the capital costs, and it takes the personnel costs, and all of the operational costs that Sheriff Arthur incurs, and that the county incurs, and uses that to create an inmate-per-day cost. And then our share of that is based on how many inmates we have on there on a daily basis, and we're invoiced on a monthly basis. So that is, that's what's behind that number, and it's, I think we'd be happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you. Does anyone on council have questions? Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. First, let me thank you for taking us through the facility. As I mentioned, when I was with you on Thursday, I grew up in the criminal court building in Knox County, and that was truly a jail in the kind of 19th century sense of the word. The facility that you have there is, would be like going to Harvard and calling it a school, I guess. I mean, it's, it really has the feel of a correctional institution, which is what we want, I think. I mean, there's a measure of pride that I feel that we are involved in a facility that has so many services and outreach efforts underway to try to bring people back in line. And that's very important for, I think, Falls Church to be associated with an institution such as that. At the same time as I, and nothing that I say from here forward is to take away from that in any way at all, but one is required, of course, since one sits on the council, to try to sharpen the pencil and figure out, is there any way that money can be saved? We talked about some of that on Thursday. Just a couple of informational questions people have asked me. How many prisoners, I think you said the capacity is, could be up to 700. Right now, you have something in the 400s. How many of those are Falls Church, and how many are male and female?
First of all, thank you very much. I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate them on Thursday. It does help, I think, understand a little bit better who we are and what we do, if you've had the experience of working in the judicial system. We have, at last month's billing, February's billing, I should say, we had 39 inmates. Unfortunately, I don't have them broken down by gender, but 39 local responsible Falls Church inmates. And then we had three individuals, in addition to those 39, that were actually state responsible prisoners that were housing. And then, for instance, over that month, we had five individuals that came in that were what we call dip charges, drunken public charges, that, you know, we, as we said, did not charge the city for. And one thing I'd like to also note is that I do, as the sheriff, I take on all the liability that comes with housing the prisoners for the city of Falls Church. So if something were to occur with one of them, and there's a lawsuit that comes, it's not Sheriff Biddle that's going to get sued for their custody and the circumstances, it's myself. And it's, you know, it's the Arlington County Sheriff's name that's on the top of that lawsuit, and it's my staff that spend enormous amounts of hours putting together anything we need for any type of lawsuit. So I just sort of throw that out there as another.
Okay. Thank you for the numbers. And to connect up with what you're saying about the dip cases, as I listened to what you were saying on Thursday and thought about it further, I, there's two things that I think would be helpful for everybody on council to have confidence in. One, you know, that your administrative accounting procedures are, you know, right down to the T, and there's never anybody that falls between the cracks. Be hard for that to happen anyway, I would think, but in an accounting sense, you know, make sure we're not getting charged one penny or one hour more. It was interesting and reassuring to know that if somebody came in at, you know, 10:00 PM and left at 7:00 AM, you did not charge us for two days, but really just for a 24-hour window. That's the kind of, you know, really sharpen the pencil kind of accounting that's useful. So, you know, our confidence level in your computer processes, your administrative procedures is very important. The second thing I would say is, to our folks, Chief Gavin and you all in cooperation, you know, help us understand if there's anything we can be doing on our end to, I mean, obviously, we're not going to not arrest people who need to be arrested, but if there are steps that we could be taking, I know we're taking some already, preventative steps and so forth, to try to keep people out of, you know, the situation. I mean, the first level of that are the drunken publics, where I gather they're picked up, there's time involved in taking them down into Arlington, but as I understand it, there's no actual cost associated with them kind of camping out over in that little bus waiting area facility looking like space. And, I mean, obviously, somebody who's in that position has got a lot of problems, so we don't want to make any kind of light of that at all. But if situations like that arise here in the city, and somebody is a frequent visitor to your facility in those circumstances, I trust that we have, you know, things in place here that will try to address that, particularly if it's a youthful offender, so that they maybe are not getting into the orbit that might lead them to be an overnight charge, because we want to try to avoid that at all costs.
That, I, as far as frequent visitors, I guess they would know that better than I, the sheriff and the chief. And we do all together monitor and scrub the numbers, and I will say that the sheriff's office and the police both, when we did actually have a computer glitch, that really came because of the fact that we were doing the annual billing, and so to us, it didn't stand out, and we literally ended up having to go back and hand-figure out where the incident occurred. And so by doing monthly billing, which is the way we do, for instance, any federal inmates, which we don't have very many of, but that's the way we process them, it makes it much more obvious when a mistake occurs in the computer system, which is a rarity that, and it just so happened to be to Falls Church, and I think made Mr. Shields and probably several members of the board have a few more gray hairs while we tried to sort it out.
Yeah.
Because it really just wasn't obvious to us because of the fact of the way the system worked, and we were doing annual billing. So I think now that we're doing monthly billing, it makes sure that that won't happen again. And as far as the frequent visitors that come in for like a dip charge, you know, Arlington, I know, has set, has a system in place to try to deal with some of those individuals, and we have a crisis intervention center where the police can take some of those people instead of bringing them to jail. What do we call that center? I can't think of it. Jail diversion program.
Mm-hmm.
That they're running through the Department of Human Services, which are good things to do because it does try to help, you know, get a person on the right path to get services, to help.
Right. And I would just say to my colleagues, obviously, you know, any money that we spend on those kind of diversion-type services, that's not going to come free either, but if it washes out to save us more than $170 a night charge, then obviously, it's a worthwhile expense. The last thing, I thought the manager had a good way of putting it towards the end of our meeting on Thursday, which is, you know, we're all professionals, we're all professionals here, and, you know, we understand that this is an important relationship for us, and I didn't speak, of course, to the whole council, but, you know, we're under tremendous pressures. And the difference between $170 a night, particularly for a long-term situation, and anything less than $170 a night is something that we're obliged here to talk about and think about. And I don't, I don't have anything really further to observe on that point, but I did want to let everybody know that we have talked about these things, and I was impressed not only with the facility, but with the professionalism that Sheriff Arthur and her staff greeted the importance of our relationship and the importance of how, here in Falls Church, really every single penny counts. Does everywhere, but it particularly does here. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Duncan. Other questions, comments? Councilmember Tarter?
Is there any recourse for the state not accepting these prisoners when they're supposed to?
Unfortunately, no. It's, you know, it's very frustrating for myself. I mean, it costs us $186 a day in Arlington, just as in FY, if it makes you feel a little bit better. And unfortunately, no, there's not a lot we can do, except we do bang the drum pretty heavily to get the state to take inmates that are out of compliant, but recognizing they're not going to take anybody that's under two years at this point. I mean, the state, you know, actually has a facility that they have not opened that's brand-new, that they're paying somebody to basically flush toilets and run water in. So, crazy as that seems, it's unfortunate, but no. I'd also just, if I could add, and I don't want to take up a lot of your time because I know you have a very full agenda, but we do, and I pride myself in the fact that we do watch every penny that we spend, and one of the things we've done over the last few years is look at our medical contract very significantly, and really scrub down that contract so that we're not spending any more money than we really need to be spending. And we manage that contract very, very well. And while it's still not an inexpensive outing, because unfortunately, many of the people that we deal with every day have a lot of medical issues because they've been substance and alcohol abusers for a long time, so they carry a lot of medical issues with them, as well as mental health issues. And we have a very good working relationship with Virginia Hospital Center, and they give us a very good medical rate. We pay just above Medicaid rate because we are, even though we have a for-profit medical provider, we are paying the bill, and so they've worked very well with us to not, you know, be charging us the daily rate that they would charge somebody that walked into the hospital with no insurance. So we, and we really watch our overtime expenditures, and, you know, again, I know it's a lot of money. I recognize that. It costs a lot of money to operate a jail, unfortunately.
Thank you. Other questions?
I had a couple. Can you tell me the percentage increase in what you're assessing Arlington from FY 2013 adopted to FY 2014 proposed?
I'm not sure. You mean the difference, our budget from Arlington County's perspective?
Right. Your Arlington.
It's 3%. It's a 3% increase.
The point I'm making with that is the Arlington budget is going up 3%, but our budget is going up 18%. And you can understand that that number is going to cause a lot of issues and a lot of questions, so we appreciate your consideration. I'd also ask the city manager to provide us with any alternatives for incarceration and those costs per person. Okay.
I'd like, can I just throw some stuff out there for you?
Sure.
First of all, the reality of the situation is the budget, the contract that was in place previously was kind of, the county, when they negotiated that rate, I don't really even know how they used it. The sheriff's office wasn't involved in it. When we tried to do this, I went to the state compensation board, they do an annual audit of every jail in the Commonwealth, and they're the ones that come up with the daily rate of what it costs. And so that's what we used as the tool, backing out some things, some of the things we added that they don't count, and working with your management and finance office when we came up with this amount. As far as, there are a lot of services that we didn't include in this cost, and we felt like the easiest thing to do was come up with something that we had dollars and cents amounts versus trying to figure out, like, for instance, any court services, your circuit court cases that come into court, I provide security for all those cases, I provide, you know, security for lockup, I, all of that is borne by Arlington County. That's not included in any of these costs. We transport your prisoners to the state facilities when the bed becomes available. That's not counted in any of these costs. There's a lot of things that didn't get calculated in here that we said that when we stepped back from it, it was easier to use the jail cost report and recognize that there were a lot of other things we were not going to charge the city for, but we're trying to recoup what it actually costs us to incarcerate somebody in Arlington County. So that's where the number came from, and that's really the reality was, is that you probably weren't being appropriately charged in the past, based on what actual costs were, but the state didn't start using this, or created this jail cost report until 1998. So it wasn't in existence when this contract was originally done. But there, there is quite a lot of stuff that we do for the city that you're not paying for. I just would like to add that in there so that you all understand that when you're discussing the costs, I appreciate that you need to figure out what the most cost-effective option is for you. But, you know, I would just, just at least let you all, make sure you're aware that there's going to be a lot of additional burden put on the sheriff if he is responsible for moving prisoners from the Fairfax or Loudoun County, or Alexandria, or Prince William, or wherever that you might make a decision to go, if they have to come back and forth to court. There are court costs that would be incurred to lock somebody up and feed them, et cetera. And when we're running juveniles, if you have juveniles that need to be in Arlington for court, I know you all do court here for juveniles in general district, but if you have somebody over there that needs to come to Arlington and we're making the run, we always pick people up for the sheriff so that he doesn't have to take on that responsibility to do them if we're already there. So there's a lot of things, I think we have a very good working relationship with the city of Falls Church. It's been a longstanding relationship, and I think we all have each other's back. We, you know, are all here to ensure the safety of both the city of Falls Church and Arlington County, but I also just have to say that Arlington County, you know, does have the responsibility of making sure that the citizens of Arlington are not incurring costs for another locality, and so there's got to be a fairness issue there. The other thing I would also note is, we run a pre-trial program in Arlington, and I believe today you have about 12 individuals that are out in pre-trial, so they're, and, you know, that program that we run, my staff manages, but you're not paying anything for. So again, I mean, it is a grant-funded program from the state, but the county does incur costs to it, and, you know, we treat your prisoners just like they're Arlington prisoners. And if there's a program and an advantage for them, we're going to make sure that they have an opportunity to participate.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments?
Just one, actually. I was thinking about the Alexandria jail, which was talked about. They're in a shared arrangement with the feds, is that, is that right? And so, do you all have any other shared arrangements in Arlington with any jurisdiction besides us?
Actually, we're a regional jail, so technically Alexandria has, I think, maybe 20 beds, but they've never used them. And then we, you all have, I think it's probably 10 beds. And the other thing I would note is our debt service. They have no debt service. The federal government paid for a good portion of their facility. They have, I think they have 150 beds that the feds pay for whether they're there or not. We don't have any arrangement like that with the feds. We used to house a fairly good amount, but we no longer do. They don't have the need for those individuals to use the beds, so therefore, we don't have anybody, we might have two or three or five feds at any given time, but that's a fairly large amount at this point in time. And let me say, our debt service, and we've talked about this as well, I think we have one more year on the debt service for the jail, so that's about $10.50 a day that is incurred as part of the cost of keeping somebody incarcerated. And while the debt service will go away in about a year, as I told Mr. Shields, it would be my hope that the county will give us some capital money to replace some equipment and things that need to be done because we run 24/7, even though we're a quote-unquote "new" jail, we opened in the early '90s. Our equipment is, you know, kitchen equipment and so forth needs replacing because it's used so much.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Any other questions or comments? There being none, thank you very much, Sheriff. Much appreciated. Sheriff, thank you very much.
Introduce Chief Jim Schwartz, Fire Chief for Arlington County. And before we turn the floor over to him, I'll just note, there are two call centers in fire services that we will talk about tonight. Jim will first provide an interview, an overview of the services we received directly from Arlington County, and that is on page 113 of your budget books. And he has a PowerPoint presentation to assist in that overview. The other call center is noted in your budget book as the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department. And what that is composed of is our expenses for Station 6 upkeep, as well as fuel and upkeep of our apparatus. And I'll ask Chief of our volunteers, Paul Schaumberg, to speak to those. We do rely on the volunteers as our agent, really, in administering a lot of those costs for our apparatus and our station. So I will let Jim take us away, and we, Richard, it might be helpful if you turn off the lights, unless we want to see Jim first for his first introduction.
That's fine. I have a face made for radio. Well, good evening, and thanks for the opportunity to share a little bit with you about the Fire EMS service here in Falls Church, and of course, in Arlington County, which I want to stress, we see as one system. The, you know, we don't draw a lot of distinctions or a lot of lines between the services that are provided in Arlington. Station 6, as far as we are concerned, is just one of, one of the nodes, if you will, in the network of Fire EMS services that are provided to both the county and the city. Our first slide this evening just gives you a sense of how we go about our business. That's our mission statement there, which was revised about 18 months ago through a collaborative effort with our entire workforce that looked at our mission, our vision, and our values.
This is a clicker. If you use the button on the right, it'll advance it.
Great. This is just a little compilation of the different services. We are a very diverse organization in terms of the services that we provide. Everybody in the department is cross-trained, at a minimum, at the fire suppression, emergency medical, and hazardous materials certifications. And then we do a variety of other services, including, we're the bomb team. We provide all the bomb services in Arlington, again, as a part of a regional compilation, which I'll talk about more in just a moment, and have a variety of apparatus and equipment to serve the full mission. I will note that a couple of pieces of apparatus that are there, the one on the right, the Medical Care Support Unit, the Bomb Squad, and the ambulance, the medical ambulance that's on the left-hand slide there, are products of the National Capital Region's Urban Area Security Initiative Homeland Security Grant Program. So those pieces of equipment, as well as many others not depicted here, are pieces that have been added to the larger region in terms of our preparedness efforts since 9/11, that really are not purchased for an individual jurisdiction. They are purchased as part of the regional effort. So those are deployed throughout the National Capital Region. They are actually one, in some cases, of seven or eight that are replicated all across the region. Truly a regionally-integrated system. Whoops. A little tricky here. Okay. Just a little bit about demand for Fire EMS services here in the city. Fire Station 6 responded to about 5,300 calls, actually, a little more than 5,300 calls, in calendar 2012. About 70, I'm sorry, 60% of the overall demand in Arlington, including Falls Church, is for EMS-related calls. About 10% is what we call public service calls, and the remainder is what we put in the category of fire calls. It's not too far off those same percentages here in the city. And this is the kind of thing that we see, you know, really the trend being true in most communities today. There is a, if not a decline, at least a sustained reduction in the number of fires today, and we see more and more emergency medical service calls, prompted in large part by aging communities, you know, our, we see the baby boomers getting older and having, putting more demand on the medical system. And EMS, when you think about it, is just part of the American medical, American medical system. One of the things that's really noteworthy about the Northern Virginia area is that we operate under what we refer to as the NOVA Agreement. This is an automatic aid agreement that has been in existence since 1975. And what it stipulates is that the jurisdictions that are signatories to the agreement will provide service to their partner jurisdictions, really based on who's closest to the incident. In other words, we don't use jurisdictional boundaries for response. The agreement first started with Arlington, Alexandria, and both the city and county of Fairfax in 1975. Units responding to the call for service, again, based on whoever is closest. And then later, we added the airports Prince William and Loudon County. And when I say later, those departments came on board, probably in about 1999, 2000, and really accelerated their participation in the agreement after 9/11. And of course, we count Falls Church as part of the Arlington participation in this system. This is a noteworthy agreement, because while most of the nation is still trying to figure out mutual aid, that is, one jurisdiction calls another in the moment and says, are you willing to provide us with assistance? This is all automatic. It is all done through our dispatch centers. In fact, we have what we refer to as CAD-to-CAD, where our computer-aided dispatch systems are actually communicating with each other, and where we used to pick up the telephone and ask if a resource was available, and the call had to actually be processed in one or more communication centers. That's now done automatically. And we went from a call processing time involving more than one jurisdiction of two minutes per call to a call processing time of less than two seconds. So that means a lot when we're talking about life-or-death matters, especially in the EMS arena. So a little bit more granularity with responses in 2012. To begin with, under the Automatic Aid Agreement, units from Falls Church respond both in the city and in the county, and also into Fairfax County, and occasionally all the way to Alexandria, if that's necessary. In 2012, and this is somewhat a representation of the last number of years, about 58% of the calls were in Station 6's first due. Now, again, this is divided, we'll show you a map in just a moment, of both the city and the area in Arlington County, where Station 6 is the closest responding home base, if you will. And then about 42% that went beyond that first due into the county, or into Fairfax, or into the city. And also of note, under the Automatic Aid Agreement, there were about 2,800 calls in 2012, I'm sorry, 2,800 units from other jurisdictions that came into the city to provide either initial response or backup for Station 6 units. So this is the map, and actually, it turns out the color's changed a little bit on this, but the yellow that you see in the middle is the box area, the geographic region that the fire station is located in. So the yellow box that you see to the right is actually the next closest station. That's Station 8 in the county. The, I guess we'll call that a tan, or a sage, or a khaki area. Around that bright yellow area is the first due response area for Fire Station 6. Does this have a pointer?
Yeah.
Excellent. So this area here is where the units from Fire Station 6 are expected to be the first responding units to calls for service. So if it's an engine-only response anywhere in this area, and Engine 6 is available, they're going to be the ones to respond. Over on this side of their territory, if they were not available, 8, Station 8, would be the second due, and would respond into that particular area. Now, this line right here is the dividing line between the city and the council. So this side right here, I'm sorry, between the city and the county, this side right here is the city side and the box areas that, within the city, that the city is, that the units from 6 are first due responders to. And here is where they are first due into the county. Interestingly, geographically, the area is about equal, and so too is the population. If you take the population of this area right here within the county, it's almost exactly what the city's population is on this side here. The grayer area that you see out here, that goes into Arlington and into Fairfax, is the second due area. That's where the units from Station 6 respond as the second due units. They could be the first due if the units that serve those areas from Fairfax or Arlington are out. They just become the primary responders in that instance. A little bit about the cost of operating the Fire EMS services. An engine today costs just south of $550,000 for the unit. It's got about $135,000 worth of equipment on it. Its annual fuel costs are a little bit above $12,000, and its maintenance costs are about $16,000 per year. Ladder truck is far more expensive. It comes close to $1 million. And when you add the equipment and the operating costs, it certainly is. And a medic unit is about $236,000, with equipment just close to $100,000 there. Now, these costs come from the Arlington County FY 14 budget, and they represent Arlington County apparatus, because the way that we budget for our apparatus, it's our equipment division within our Department of Environmental Services that acquires the apparatus. And based on the operating costs, they tell us each year, this is what you have to plan for in your operating budget. We operate our engines, our ladder trucks, and rescue squads, which are not, we don't have a rescue squad in your station. The way that we operate our system is that the county purchases the apparatus using money off of its master lease. And we do that on an eight-year replacement cycle. And so the cost of 100, I'm sorry, the annual, well, we don't have the annual cost up there, but there is an annual cost that is charged to us for, actually, I think it's in the next slide, for each of those units in our operating budget, as well as the maintenance cost. So the county is fronting the money off the master lease to purchase each of the units. We do it in three phases, and then our operating budget in the department is charged the annual cost for that. I'll note that we used to buy apparatus and operate it for 20 years at a time. We buy an engine and operate it for 20 years, buy a ladder truck and operate it for 20 years. And unfortunately, the cost of doing business that way is such that you have enormous costs in the back end of the life cycle, because that's when we are spending a lot of money in maintenance. And we are not getting the kind of frontline reliability that we do out of newer apparatus. So we needed a much larger reserve fleet of apparatus that we don't operate today with this program. Equipment, just to give you a sense for equipment that goes on the units and what its cost is. So one set of breathing apparatus costs about $5,000. A thermal imaging camera is about $7,000. A mobile radio is about $8,000. So these are the kinds of things that then needed to be added on to the cost of just the apparatus. This is just a reflection of some of the equipment. So you can see, it is not, it is not cheap. We do have to replace a lot of this equipment fairly frequently. As an example, breathing apparatus is on a 10-year life cycle. Breathing apparatus and LifePak defibrillators, which go on all of our, both our fire trucks and our medic units, those are also things that we acquire off of the county's master lease. And then there's an annualized cost that's part of our operating budget to pay back those lease payments. So overall, the cost of salaries for the Falls Church Firehouse are almost $4 million. We split that in the current agreement, 50/50. But when we split that cost, that is for the base salaries, and all of the benefits. The county incurs all of the costs for overtime and callback. We also incur all of the costs for hiring and their training. Just by way of reference, when we hire somebody, they are in school for six months, for 24 weeks, to gain all of their certifications and be ready to go out and perform as a new employee in our system. We give, as a requirement of national standards, we do physicals on each of our employees every year. And of course, we provide them with all of their uniforms and protective equipment. If an employee is chosen to go on to become a paramedic, then there is an additional training that they need to go to, and that training costs us about $26,000, you know, for three paramedics. And that does not include their salary time while they're in school. When somebody decides, or we select somebody to become a paramedic, they become essentially non-operational for a period of about five months while they go to school to gain all the training and certification that they need to perform in that capacity. And then, once they become certified as a paramedic, they need to go to four hours of training a month, as required by the state, to maintain their certification. And of course, that incurs a cost, too, because that training is not given to them while they're on duty. That is usually an off-duty day that they are sent to that training, and we have to pay for all their costs as well. So that's a little bit of background in terms of the cost of doing business. The budget number in your budget is a little bit above $1.8 million. And again, I refer back to the slide. That's 50% of the salaries and benefits for 30 employees that are assigned to Fire Station 6. In reality, there are never less than 33 assigned there, and in most cases, anywhere from 35 to 36, depending on what available staffing is. It takes 10 minimum each day to operate Fire Station 6, four on the engine, four on the ladder truck, and three on the medic, I'm sorry, two on the medic unit. And then we have at least one extra on each shift to account for vacancies. When somebody's on leave, somebody has to go to training, you know, whatever the variety of causes for vacancies are. And then there are additional overtime costs that also get added into that. So with that, Mr. Manager, I'll leave it to questions.
In terms of our discussions about the best allocation of our fire service costs, the numbers on the last slide have factored into those discussions. And as the council's aware, the basic premise of our agreement is a 50/50 split for salary and benefits for 30 firefighters, and that's split 50/50 between the county and the city. The city pays for the apparatus and ensures and fuels and maintains the apparatus. The county equips the apparatus. And then with the station, the city built and paid for the station, the city paid for the furnishings for the station and maintains the station, utilities, repairs, and that type of thing. But a lot of the direct firefighting equipment that's in the station is paid for by the county. That's in a nutshell our existing agreement. And in our discussions about possibly splitting up the cost of station maintenance and apparatus acquisition and maintenance, the county's providing information about what their true personnel costs are. And so those numbers below the 3.9 million is what we're sorting through right now, as we're discussing an equitable and administratively feasible way to allocate these costs. We haven't come to our final recommendations to the council or to the county board on those yet, and we're still working through it.
So when you look at the, when you look at those additional personnel costs, the overtime, and the equipment that we touched on in the presentation, as well as other things that we add into the station just to operate it, like the alerting system that tells firefighters that they have a call, the computers and our voice-over-IP system that we have into the station, those all add up to about an additional $800,000 a year that the county provides to operate the station.
Other questions and comments from members of council?
Let me ask a couple of questions. Mr. City Manager, the amount that you put in for this part of the fire services protection is up 10.37%. Is that right? That's on page 113.
And that's after accounting for revenue. So if you look one line up, it's 1.9 million, and that's an 8.83% increase, just on the cost side. cost side.
So, and now, the 10.37% and the 1.6 million, is that the county's proposal, or is that your proposal, or what does that represent?
That represents the status quo. That represents the 1989 agreement, working then with the county's OMB, again, to produce a number based on what their personnel costs are.
And is your proposal something that would reduce those costs?
Well, we're still working through those numbers, and we have not arrived at that point yet. So I don't have a recommendation on that yet.
Okay. What percentage of calls from this fire station are in the city, total calls are in the city of Falls Church versus outside the city of Falls Church?
About 50% are in the, no, I'm sorry. In last year, 31% of the calls were in the city.
Okay.
I say 50 because if you add the part where they would be closest in the county, that's how you get to 50. But 30, last year, 31% of the calls were in the city.
Okay. And then I see charges for service, $265,000 proposed. What are they? That's a reduction from the budget amount.
So those are charges for service, those are the ambulance fees.
Okay. So people are transported, but they're still charged?
No, that's correct.
That's the only thing they're charging. We don't, we don't charge for a response. We only charge for a transport. And the city gets the revenue for every ambulance transport that Medic Six makes, and it gets all of the ambulance revenue from any of the Arlington units that come into the city and make a transport.
I have to say, as a philosophical matter, I'm against charging people for emergency services. I understand that they're paid for frequently by health insurance. I don't represent the health insurance issue, so this isn't a special interest issue. I just, I just have an issue with that, but I'm not going to raise it right now as a budgetary issue. I just wanted to state that for the record. Any other questions or comments for the chief?
Sure.
Okay. Chief, thank you very much. I appreciate your longtime service. If I recall, you were in charge of the Pentagon incident on 9/11?
I was, with a lot of great people surrounding me and helping us to do a good job.
Yep. Job well done.
Thank you very much.
And Chief, I'd ask if you could stay here at the table, and Chief Paul Schonberg, if you could come forward and guide us through the, what is listed in the budget is the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department. But I do want to take care to note that no city money goes directly to the volunteers. What we do is we place our station maintenance and our fuel and apparatus maintenance in what is called the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department Call Center. Chief Schonberg.
Thanks, Wyatt. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm going to keep my comments brief because I do understand you have a very full agenda. If you would turn your books to page 113, that outlines the areas of the, excuse me, not, 114, that outlines the areas that it's allocated as the Falls Church Volunteer Fire Department budget. As Wyatt indicated earlier, it's a little bit of a misnomer to call it the VFD budget because what this budget represents is the cost contribution of the city towards the operation of the fire station. So these are things that benefit all of the members who operate from Fire Station Six. So that would be both the volunteers, as well as the career personnel from Arlington County. As Wyatt indicated, this is things like facility maintenance, utilities, the maintenance and fueling of apparatus, insurance for the apparatus, and then other various miscellaneous costs that go into the daily upkeep of the fire station complex. One of the things that I think Bear's mentioning, and I've certainly mentioned this to Chief Schwartz and to Wyatt before, but we greatly appreciate the partnership that we share with Arlington County. Arlington has made an excellent choice in the selection of their station commander, Captain Nick Salama, who is assigned to the C-shift there, has been a consummate professional and an excellent person to work with. He and I have partnered together, and his efforts deserve to be recognized because in many cases, he goes above and beyond to make sure that we're all working together to manage the station properly. Probably the greatest thing of interest in the proposed budget that you see before you is that this is a flat budget. We're not looking for any great changes up or down in the coming year. There have been some slight modifications in different line items just to account for actual changes that we've seen, but nothing that bears, you know, deep commentary. If there aren't any other questions about the budget per se, I would like to also address the CIP items, which are later on in your, in your book, which you would find on page There's three key things proposed in FY14 for the CIP. The first is fire station improvements. This is an item that we've had in discussion for several years. It includes replacement of the fire station windows, the apparatus bay doors, as well as repaving of all the asphalt areas of the building. I cannot emphasize enough how critically important this is. It really is a maintenance headache for the station, and it's getting to a point of diminishing returns. So I urge you to take action on that. Additionally, the frontline engine, which is owned by the city, is now entering its eighth year of service. Arlington County has a seven-year replacement cycle on its apparatus. And in addition to the fact that this is one year beyond that replacement cycle already, the process that we follow here in the city has been that the frontline engine usually transfers to a reserve status at our building, which means that by the time this frontline engine gets replaced, it'll actually be 15 years old. So we need to take action on that in the coming year if we can. And then finally, we have a ladder truck proposed. The current vehicle is a 2001 model, which puts it at, it will be 13 years of service by the time it is replaced, and that's going against Arlington's practice of eight years. It has exceeded its life cycle. It's served us very well, but it's time to move forward with a replacement. I've been working with the Arlington County Apparatus Officer to discuss specifications, and it's my intention that we have a mutually agreeable specification, ready to go with contract signing occurring in the July timeframe. Typically, delivery on something like this takes anywhere from six to 10 months, but that depends on a number of factors, and we just don't know that yet. The last thing I would mention in the CIP is that we have a planning number allocated for FY15 for replacement of the HVAC in the building. This is one of the primary areas of cost concern for us. We would have moved forward in FY14, but we're proposing to do a little bit of engineering work to potentially redesign the systems that are in the building to something that's going to be more efficient, and we just needed more time to put that information together. So we hope to have a proposal on that for you in the coming year.
And if I may, Vice Mayor, I just want to note that the CIP items that Mr. Schonberg just mentioned were fully supported by the Planning Commission on a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. Could you just remind me what your outreach to the community is in terms of supporting the Volunteer Fire Department through private contributions?
Absolutely. Yes, sir. Thank you. We actually have two primary methods of fundraising, and it's actually worthy of mentioning that the Volunteer Fire Department also has its own independent budgeting and funding stream. We do a community outreach, which is a fund drive letter annually, as well as we host birthday parties at the firehouse for a fee. And that actually generates a fair amount of revenue for us, and we enjoy it because it's a good opportunity to interface with the community and impart a little bit of fire safety knowledge at the same time.
And are there, thank you, and are there rental fees? There are for use of the facilities by outside groups, right?
There are. We don't charge for use by anyone in the city government. Arlington County often uses the facility as well, free of charge, and, you know, we're happy to facilitate that. But if a private company wants to come in and use our, use our facilities, we do charge for that. And that's, that's just for the basis of revenue. It's also worth mentioning that right now, operating out of Fire Station Six, there's a medic unit, which has been graciously loaned by Arlington County. But I believe the intent, moving forward on the tripartite agreement, is to have the volunteers purchase a replacement for that unit, which will be a cost to the volunteer organization of about 240K. And that is not something that you will see in your CIP because it's being funded by the Volunteer Department.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Chief Schonberg, a couple of questions. You don't need to answer them now, but I am interested in your thoughts about how to more extensively use the volunteers, perhaps in needing career officers less. I'm familiar with Montgomery County, Maryland, where volunteer units are frontline response units. So I'm interested in learning what you can propose to us in terms of expanding the role of volunteers, either as first-line responders as in addition to or in place of career units and individuals.
I certainly share your goal of better utilizing volunteers, and I actually believe that we're going to make some pretty strong strides in that in the coming year. Arlington announced today that they've appointed Lieutenant Beau Bennett as the liaison for the volunteers, with the primary purpose of helping to establish more strict, stringent standards, which is, I think, very important so that Arlington has a comfortable understanding of our capabilities so that they can utilize us to our fullest extent.
I'd appreciate any, any further suggestions that you have.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to share them.
Chief, do you have any other, Chief Schwartz, any suggestions for us about how to bring down the cost?
You know, all I can say is that the city manager and I have been working really hard at looking at, you know, at the distribution of costs. Unfortunately, and I, you know, I don't mean to parrot the sheriff, but, you know, unfortunately, these things are expensive. You know, the infrastructure is expensive, the operating, there aren't, there simply are not, you know, any cheaper fire trucks out there, you know, that sort of thing. And of course, you know, keeping the system operating at the high, at the high level that I think both the city and the county have become accustomed to, you know, makes it difficult. And obviously, most of our costs are in personnel.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Good to be known. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Appreciate all the service that you provide.
And if I, if I could just note also, it is, I think, extraordinary, the contribution that Paul Schonberg and the volunteers make. We do rely on them to be our agent financially for the repairs of the station, and that's an extraordinary service. It requires a great deal of time and effort. And Chief Schwartz is a leader in the region and I think runs one of the best fire departments in the country. And I think it's a very longstanding relationship that we've had with you, and I appreciate your efforts as we've gone through these discussions. Look forward to coming to a good conclusion.
Yeah. I would just say in conclusion that it's our job to go every, go through every line in this budget, and we'll do that, but we're not going to sacrifice core services. Thank you. We have court services next, do we?
We do. Laka Vargasey, if she could come up, her clerk of court. And this is Laka's first time before the city council for a budget discussion. And I would just note very briefly that the clerk of court budget is generally not very much to talk about, but I did want the council just to be aware, and I think the council is aware, that we received correspondence from the Arlington County Circuit Court urging that the city consider a salary supplemental. They asked for a 20% supplemental. Their clerk of court are on a state pay scale, which really doesn't work in northern Virginia. And in discussions with Arlington County, I've built into the budget a supplemental that Laka can describe in a little bit more detail, but I wanted the council just to be aware of that one item, and if you could describe some of the rationale behind that.
Good evening. My name is Laka. I'm the clerk of the court for the city of Falls Church. The, we actually have kind of a couple of reasons why we're asking for a salary supplemental. It's in the amount in the budget. It was requested at 15%. A lot of the agencies that are state agencies here in the actual city of Falls Church, to include the commission of the Roverit New, as well as the sheriff's office and the treasurer's office, our state employees, however, they do also receive a city supplement to help them maintain and, you know, do their jobs. In our office, we have three full-time staff members and one part-time person. At this point, we only have the three people, including myself. And what we've noticed is, you know, we service the people and the citizens of the city of Falls Church, as well as surrounding areas. We take in paperwork, you know, we process paperwork, we deal directly with the Commonwealth attorney, the assistant Commonwealth attorneys, defense counsel, citizens that may be angry or not angry when they come to the counter. We deal with the sheriff for other localities as well as here, the judges here, the police department, as well as the detention home and court services unit. Arlington District Courts for general district, as well as JDR, they're two separate entities in Arlington. Here, we're a combined unit. We have general district court every Wednesday and juvenile court the second and the fourth Tuesdays of each month. So a different judge may be coming to hear cases. For general district, officers can write up to 50 tickets per court date. So if you have four officers on a shift, you could have 50 tickets for each of those officers, depending on what they write as far as speeding or inspection, just depending on what is out there for the code of Virginia. Arlington District Courts, like I said, they're separate, however, they're, the county has granted them effective July of 2012 to receive a 15% salary supplement. When you work for the state, especially with the court system, you come in at a base salary. There's no merit system in the courts. It's, if you get lucky, if you get a raise, usually it never happens. And what we're trying to do is maintain the people that we have because a base salary for a regular employee that I have is $32,608, which it's very difficult to keep someone at that salary where they could go somewhere else and make more money and get better benefits. Now, with this salary supplement of the 15%, we're not asking for any healthcare or retirement. We're just asking for a straight supplemental, not to take any more money from what is already being requested. And then, as far as if you compare jobs for our office, and mainly anywhere in the Commonwealth of Virginia for a clerk's office job, you could find that same job in the Arlington Circuit Court for at least $10,000 to $15,000 more at a starting base salary. So there, there's a discrepancy between different courts as far as, you know, trying to maintain good people at not a very large salary per se.
The, and this is all on page 98 of the budget book. And so, and just in terms of numbers, the, what is, what is built into the budget is a $22,000 supplemental. That is partially offset by a decrease in materials and supplies by 5,000, so the net cost increase to meet this request by the county and from the county clerk of court was 17,000.
Councilmembers, any questions?
A question.
Retarder?
Sure.
It looks like your caseload went down fairly significantly in 2012.
Right.
What's the reason for that?
Honestly, from a court's perspective, we can't tell you because we are simply the holders of the paper, whatever paperwork. It's brought to us by the police department or the sheriff's office. We process that paperwork, and it goes before the judge, and it will either get resolved or continued or have whatever result it does. So we, as the court, we don't control what comes on the docket. The only thing that we can control is, for example, if someone comes in on a criminal or felony charge, and it's set for trial or it's set for a preliminary hearing, and that defendant doesn't appear, then the judge has the authority to issue a capias, which would then increase the number by one. But the court really doesn't have any authority on putting, processing paperwork out there or getting people arrested or giving them speeding tickets. That would be primarily done through the police and the sheriff's office.
So is the majority of your salaries paid by the state then? And then what you're seeking is just something above and beyond the state?
Correct.
So the, the three full-time people you have, I think, is it, is it three? Did I hear that right?
Three, yeah, including myself.
Yeah, those three, those are all state salaries.
It's all state salaries.
And so that what you're seeking as far as your budget, your total budget is 28,000 or potentially-
Correct.
or potentially $48,000? That's everything that the city's responsible for?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And in terms of the caseload, when we go through the public safety budget, that is, I think, a law enforcement discussion, but there has been a decrease in some of the speeding citations, and there are reasons for that, and we'll be able to discuss those in a week when we have police here.
Any questions, comments? There being none. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I would invite the school board to come forward. Thank you very much for being here. And the superintendent? Welcome back from your spring break.
Why don't we go ahead and get started? Welcome to our school board colleagues and our chair, so, and the staff. So Susan, I'll kick it off to you. If, I know that you all just gave us a packet, so perhaps maybe you want to walk us through. That'd be great.
Sure, thanks. And thank you to council persons Barry and Kalen for submitting their questions. And we have supporting materials in response to those questions tonight. I'm not sure we'll step through all of them. Some of them, this combined group has been through before, some are new. The first thing I wanted to do, risk of beating a dead horse, was simply remind you about our requests for this year and our belief that it's a fair and necessary request. If you look on the front page of the packet that Mr. Kimball just provided to you, you'll see a couple of charts. One showing the, hi Karen, increase in student enrollment over the past number of years, 26 percent, and the gap between that enrollment and the funding that's come to the schools. As we've been telling folks all around the town in the various venues that we've been talking about budget, that's led to class sizes in excess of our policy, in excess of state standards of quality, in excess of our neighbors, and we need to bring those down. And then the second chart, simply showing you that the proportion of the general fund going to schools over the past number of years has dropped what seems to us to be pretty dramatically. We, of course, were complicit in this as we worked closely with you over the last four years during, you know, kind of the tough times we had in the city, and then to help rebuild our reserves and our fund balance, but we're at the point now where we need to get back to funding the schools at the appropriate level. I would say that I've, I've done some research, it's probably not exhaustive, but I would have to say the only thing that I can find in the city that's grown by 26 percent, other than the number of students enrolled, is the growth in the general fund for the city. Don't think we have 25 or 6 percent more streets or parks or residents, or maybe more, maybe that many more books in our library, I'm not sure about that. But this is dramatic growth for our schools, and we need to get back to funding them appropriately and adequately. I'm going to work closely with my colleague here, Dr. Jones, who helped pull together some of the supporting data to respond to your questions. And we'll just kind of start and, you know, raise your hand or if you have a question, shout out, and we'll be happy to talk to you about that. In terms of our projections, we're not going to go into great detail because we really rely on others for our projections. We simply pull them together and try to validate them. There are two components to our projections. One is the projections we get from the Walden Cooper Center down at the University of Virginia. They are the demographer of record for the Commonwealth of Virginia, as well as for, in some senses, the census. And we take their projections, which are based on a birth rate model. We then work closely with our colleagues on the city side to layer on top of that the number of students that we expect to have from development, based on the city's models of the kinds of development and the sizes of developments and how many kids that ought to spin off for us. And we pull those two together. There's, I think, a chart in here, which would show you, it's on page one, which will show you the accuracy of our projections over the last number of years from fiscal year on seven to the current. And so we feel pretty confident at this point about our projections, although we all know that the further you get into the future with them, the less likely they are to be true. But we've been, been doing a good job, certainly since fiscal year '07. If you would like more detail about the Walden Cooper methodology, I would refer you to a couple of things. One, if you go to their website, they explain their methodology there at what I would call a high to mid-level. If you'd like even more detail than that, I would refer you to Dr. John Thomas, who is the executive director of the Walden Cooper Center down in Charlottesville, and one of the most open and nicest people I've ever met. And he will be happy to step you through in as much detail as you would like to understand how they do their projections, both for schools and actually for city as well, since they have done those projections. And would also, I'm sure, be happy to have the head of his demography unit speak with you and talk with you so that you understand how those are developed. So that's a little bit about our projections. The second, any questions about that? Okay. Yeah?
I like to follow everything, what data they've provided here.
Yeah.
Appreciate the effort to respond. But again, it's a lot to, there's a table that doesn't have a page number on enrollment projection.
Oh.
Page one.
Yeah.
You just have to turn it, it's page one.
It's kind of down here. It looks like a dash to you if you're holding it sideways.
Yeah, that's a one, oh, okay.
Yeah.
The projections were based on September 30th? So of course, the projections would be very accurate because the school start had, I mean, it says enrollment on September, and the projection's based on September 30th. Of course, it would be the same.
Well, but, but, we project now for next September. But we project now for next September and the one after, and after, and after, and after. September 30 is a magic date in the education business where the state measures how many students you have and decides how to fund your school division. So our official census for our students is always September 30th, even though during the course of the year, we've seen the last few years that our numbers will fluctuate and usually going up in this case. But for the purposes of our forecasting, we always think of it in terms of September 30th, whether it's this year or a year out, the next year, five years, 10, 15, or 20.
So there's a year lag? In other words, you have a projection in 2012 of what 2013 would be?
We have a projection in 2012 of what 2013 would be, 14, 15, 16, right? It's a snapshot as of a particular date. We don't, we don't reforecast during the course of the year.
So it's a year, it's a yearly projection? It's your next year's?
Well, this time of the year, if you look at the chart, like where it says 2262, this time last year when we were going through the budget, we were projecting that in September of this school year, we'd be at 2262, and we were at 2272. So we had 10 more students than our projection was this time last year.
So what is a year, okay, it's a year projection.
Well, we have to project now for this coming September, so we'll know what to prepare for.
Right. Okay, I get it. Right. Exactly. Okay. Anything else? All right. The next thing has to do with, it looks like the Child Development Center. Why did the school system project 50,000 in minor renovations, and why were projects at Mount Danial TJ off in regards to new construction and so on and so forth? I don't have a good answer for this, for you, Mr. Kael, and I, you know, you and I have talked about this before and...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
I said, you and I have talked about this question too before and about why the story is different today than it was a couple of years ago under a different leadership over here on the school board side and the superintendent's side. I can't speak for why the previous superintendent forecasted the way she did. I can say that as soon as our new superintendent came on board, we tasked her on a number of areas, not simply facilities, with going and doing an audit and making sure that we knew exactly where we needed to be on certain things. And one of the things that she has done now is walked every hall and so on, and so we now understand what is really important in terms of facilities. But I don't know why, I don't know what Lois and Joan were doing back then, so I can't speak to what they were thinking. We have nonetheless still had some surprises. For example, this year, although we knew how many students we might have and we forecasted pretty closely, we didn't expect almost 10 percent growth at Mount Daniel, for example. And this is one of the challenges with forecasting student enrollment. If you get the overall number correct, that doesn't mean that you get it correct within the grades. And so it can fluctuate, just depending on people, you know, kind of moving into the city. I can tell you that for next year, we're concerned and watching very closely because we have, how many people who've already registered for kindergarten?
We're about 140-ish.
We have 140 already registered for kindergarten. Usually at this time of the year, we would have about 90. And so it may well be that the crop of parents this year is more diligent than the crop of parents usually is, and they're paying attention and they're registering sooner, and we won't see much growth. Or it may well be that we're going to see a good deal of growth through the start of the year. But that's one of the things that's a little bit tricky. Individual components, including state and federal funding, you have it on page six. That's also been in the presentations that we've given at the various town halls and so on this year to show you what is, you know, the city always provides the lion's share of our funding. The reason for that is that the Commonwealth of Virginia believes us to be too wealthy for them to share much of their money with us. This is kind of related to the next question about unfunded mandates, which is an interesting question. As you know, there was a, the governor had a task force last year on unfunded mandates, and on page seven here, you will see the URL for that task force work, and you can go. And there was a copious list of both school-oriented and general government-oriented unfunded mandates. But from our city's perspective, you could say that almost all of the mandates from the state government are for us unfunded mandates because they give us so little money. You know, they really do. We have, if you look on page eight, there's a chart here that shows the composite index. The composite index is comprised of a number of factors, and based on the composite index you have, that's how much money the state gives you back for education. The highest composite index you can have is .8, and that is what we have, along with Arlington and Fairfax City. Fairfax Counties has floated down a little bit, and, you know, I won't go and tell you the algorithm because I don't understand it in detail. Hunter can tell you some more details and data, but Tony's indicated here kind of the major components. It has to do with income where you live, it has to do with sales where you live, and property values. And, you know, I think we, Arlington and Fairfax City, along with maybe two or three other jurisdictions out of 120 odd in the state, have a .8 composite index. So we send a lot of money down to Richmond, and that very much comes back for education, We had a number of questions about staffing and staffing allocations over the course of the past few years. I would refer you to a chart that Dr. Jones has put together that talks, not just, this is page 13, about staffing and funding changes, but about other reductions that the school board has taken in its expenses over the past number of years. This goes back to fiscal year '09. One of the things that's a little bit different about how schools operate is that we have a lot of people who are on oddball schedules, right? We don't have 40-hour-a-week, 12-month-a-week staff all the time. We do have some of those, although 40 is usually 60, but we have people who work 12 months a year, 11 months a year, 10 months a year. We have people who are full-time, who are part-time. We measure our employees in .2, and .3, and .5, and .7 of a full-time position. And one of the things that we've done, in addition to cutting staff and other costs during the last X number of years, is we have changed probably the majority of our staff's work by changing 12-month employees to 11, and 11-month employees to 10, and .5s to .4s, and .3s to .2s, and .9s to .8s. And so literally dozens and dozens of our staff has been, have been affected by the changes. You'll see here the reduction in hours of professional administrative staff, of support staff time, and also savings in non-personnel items on pages 13 and 14 and 15 over the last few years. The theme for our reductions over the past few years has been very clear. We have a strategy, which is to spend our money on teachers in the classroom. And so you will not see that we've cut a lot of teachers. That would have been foolish on our part because we have more students, more students, more students. But we have cut around the teachers in terms of administrative time, central office time, support services time, and other expenses over that time.
I'm just looking, I'm looking at the composite index section for just a minute. I appreciate the data.
Are you still back in the composite index? Sure. We look at it a lot, too.
This paints an incredibly unfair, and since we're on it, since you paused just a minute, let me go there.
I'm sorry, I should have noticed you guys were getting red-faced and holding your hands.
It wasn't you, honestly. I'm looking at Loudoun County is .56, and Prince William is .37? Really? I mean, the huge amount of subsidies, it's phenomenal. I mean, I, if, I mean, this, this data points out strongly, this composite index needs to be changed and changed now. I mean, this is absurd, and I think this is something we all agree with.
The last, the last bite was to keep it from getting even worse for us.
Right, yeah.
That was actually the last go-round in Richmond.
But, but there's no effort here to adjust for cost of living or anything, right? It's just certain things right across the board, and yeah, okay.
The composite index does not adjust for that. And to Ron's point, since I've been on the board seven years now, it seems each year in Richmond, when it comes to general assembly time, there is talk of revoting the composite index, but it's never to be in our favor. It's always to give us a higher composite index and take more of our tax dollars and put them in other parts of the state. So our position has always been to... So, our position has always been to keep it so it wouldn't get worse. Just to add another little layer of complexity, you know, there is also in the state budget something called cost of competing. And cost of competing has to do with how professional staff, teachers and support staff expenses are reimbursed to us. You know, the state has standards of quality that say how many of this and that and the other you should have based on enrollment in your school division. And there is a law that says because it's more expensive to live up here, that we get a higher reimbursement for those positions that the state believes that we should have. And there has been last session and this session, talk about eliminating that as well. And this year, once again, they did not do that. But there seems to be growing discussion in Richmond about removing all, you know, a number of the things that recognize that it's more expensive to be here in Northern Virginia from us, and all of that means less dollars to us from the state.
And I think Ron had something to add.
Well, I, I just wanted to add that when you add it all up, probably the best way to analyze it, and the best source I found for this is the WAVE report. And there, there's a 2013 report out, and you can download it or I can circulate it. And it shows you the breakdown of all the surrounding jurisdictions about the federal, the state, and the local component of the budget. And so, at, at the end of the day, if you look at it, Falls Church City falls out about the same as Alexandria and Arlington on, on what comes from the state. But you're correct that Loudoun and Fairfax and Prince William in particular, there's a huge difference. Falls Church, the total's 13.9% of the budget comes from the state, but Prince William County, it's 49%, Prince George's County, it's 54%. And so, you see, you see the range there, whereas Alexandria and Arlington are in the 12, 13% range. So, that's a, that's a easier way to distill all these formulas and what they actually mean in terms of what percentage of our budget comes from. And we also don't get much in the way of federal money because that's almost all driven by the Title I, it doesn't matter how much here, there's some special ed money and that's about it.
Right. And that's one reason why when we look at comparing what we're doing, we compare ourselves a lot to Alexandria and Arlington because our financing is much more similar with them than it would be to Fairfax, Prince William, or others. But this is unfortunately where we find ourselves. We agree, it's outrageous. You know, it was interesting, last year I had an opportunity to travel the state, every region of the state, and meet educators and others in those parts of the state. And I kind of went with a chip on my shoulder because, you know, we send a dollar to Richmond and we get 20 cents back, and 80 cents goes elsewhere around the state. I have to tell you, that chip got a little bit softened by seeing what goes on elsewhere in the state. But nonetheless, for us, every year, we're here at this table and we're sending a lot of money to Richmond and we're not getting very much back for education.
I mean, no one's suggesting that we get a dollar for a dollar back. But even 50 cents would probably eliminate the sense of financial crisis that we've had here for some years. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, yeah. And certainly, you know, I think that we always address this in our legislative package each year, and certainly, you know, would be supportive of the city council, you know, to do the same. I'm not sure we'll, much we'll ever change. We just hope right now it doesn't get worse, unfortunately. Anything else about that?
Ira?
No, not about that question.
Okay.
Anything else about the composite? Okay, let's move on.
We'll put that away for another year, till next year we bring it out again. Yes? Ira had a question?
Going to .8 of city council questions. I don't, I don't know if it was, to put it this way, I don't know who you're referring to. I didn't ask about why you had the secondary retirement plan or what it was supposed to do. Just, only asked really was what the unfunded liability was, and Richard was going to provide And would you be willing to terminate or cease payment for that because it's not a VRS retirement? And as is noted in here, the previous, eight previous couple of times removed, finance director had a lot of problems with it, thought it was an error to have instituted in the first place. So, the question was, would you be willing to, to terminate it?
Yeah, so, I think we had this question, if not last year, the year before as well. I can't answer to why it was put in place, that wasn't your question anyway. I'm sorry that the previous finance director didn't like it, I wasn't here at that time. It's something that's been around.
It was Mr. Brown, I think, was mentioned.
Yeah, it was, it was quite some time ago. I'm going to defer to Hunter. But when we had this a couple of years ago, the school board actually did look at that time about, about completely shutting down that program. And we were advised by our financial folks that it didn't make sense to do it because there are so few people left in the program. But that's as deep as I'm going to go into, I don't know, Hunter, if you have other details you want to speak to.
Yes, that, this, this transitional retirement program, it started out as an early retirement incentive program in the early 90s with the intent of upbridging the, the gap between a pre-65 retirement on the part of staff and then in getting them to 65 when they would begin to collect social security. At, later in the, in the late 90s and early 2000s, when the, the board and staff were looking at, at early retirement programs, the question really came into, was called in, in terms of could this really be cut off at the age 65, or would it, could it be considered age discriminatory? And at that point, it was determined that, given the, the cost and the, the potential future cost, it would be advisable for the board with the goal of attracting and retaining staff to move to a, to a tax-sheltered annuity incentive program where, after a certain number of years, the school board would match contributions to 403Bs through a 401A program. At that point, certain staff members, based on age and years of service, were grandfathered in to the pre-existing program. And at that point, it begun to be sunset. At this point, I believe there are about 40 or 50 remaining staff members who are either eligible to receive this benefit or are currently receiving this benefit. The annual cost is about, I want to say it's about between $200,000 and $250,000 a year. And the projected liability in terms of the future benefits, if all of the individuals who are currently working but take retirement, do, do receive this benefit and receive it for the full five years, would be about $3 million. That being said, if a retiree becomes deceased during the time they're collecting this money, the payment would stop. We have had a few of those cases, unfortunately. But essentially, in terms of working with the auditors and working with attorneys, because this has been sunset and because the liability is dropping every year, that, that, A, because it was, it was seriously looked at, you know, do we need to put a trust fund into place, you know, for this future liability? And because it's been sunset and because at this point, every year, it's, it's becoming less and less, and a termination was made when we checked with our auditors that, no, that wouldn't be advisable. At that in terms of the expectation of the individuals who had been grandfathered in and the fact that they were receiving a, a promised benefit as opposed to a, a match to the 401As, that, that it, that it would be advisable to go ahead and continue to honor that benefit and just let it, let it play itself out in sunset.
Mr. Cale?
Perhaps Mr. Foster could tell us whether there's any legal issues associated with the, with this plan if the city decided not to fund this portion of it? Thank you.
I will say also, Mr. Cale, although you did not ask, that we, we did have a 403B plan, we still have a 403B supplemental retirement plan for school employees, that the school board used to match part of their contribution. This was a benefit that was, all school divisions offered to their employees. We did stop that match a number of years ago and have not reinstituted it, although our staff certainly requests it every year. So, we have taken that action. The other thing that I want to call your attention to, which is on page 20, and I think aligns with your other question about VRS, is updated information on pages 20 and 21 about the unfunded liability for the VRS plan and an analysis of that that Hunter Kimball did and was reviewed by and supported by the chief financial officer for the VRS. And once again, I'll let Hunter step you through those details if you folks would like those details. If not, you can certainly read it on your own. I think the bottom line is it's not as dire as it might have seemed, although we need to keep an eye on it for sure.
That's a matter of opinion.
Of course it is.
I consider the situation serious. Dire, I don't know, it was never the word I particularly used, but the situation is, remained serious. The time to recover is an issue for the VRS. Others are not so sure that their calculations, their actuaries are right. The rating agencies, which I included in there, believe that there's an estimated 30% underestimation of the costs. So, we'll see going forward how this plays out, but I don't think this could be dismissed. Mr. Faison has his job, and he's the CFO, and it would be surprising if he said his own plan was going to fail. But others who are not particularly involved with it are not so sure. The person who helped me out with this was a pension actuary who does it also for a living and did not come to the same conclusions as Mr. Faison exactly. So, pension actuaries have a different, or the actuaries talking to Mr. Faison have different ideas. Again, the, the, thank you, Hunter, for the explanation on the retirement, the supplemental, whatever you want to call it. But all I was asking was not why it started, whether it was good or not, just whether it's, the unfunded liability is three or three and a half million dollars, and it's about a penny on, less than a penny on the tax rate. Would the schools be willing to terminate that or, or not? I mean, I think the city's created this, it's not a VRS. But maybe Mr. Foster can help us out with our legal liability for maintenance of this particular plan.
I would say when the schools looked at this two years ago quite seriously, we were advised against it, and we haven't changed that opinion. We haven't discussed it in depth since then because we don't know what would have changed to cause us to go back and take a look at it in doubt. But we were advised against it, so.
But we're in very difficult circumstances this year. So, let's, I'd like to find out what, what actually the city's legal liability is on this. I mean, if it's in the contract, it's contractual obligation, then it's over. If it's not, it's like the VRS, then it's, which isn't a specific contract, which we have no say over, that it'd be, it is what it is. The fund balance, did you speak to that already or were you going?
Oh, I'm sorry, did we miss the fund balance? Oh, oh, yeah, when you skipped over to number eight to ask that question, we must have missed it.
Did you want to speak to that?
I don't know. Tony, did you want to speak to that? On page 17, you'll find an explanation of the fund balance. I think we didn't plan to spend a bunch of time on it because we felt like we spent 12 weeks this summer on it. I know that particularly Mr. Cale has spent a lot of time with Richard LaConde and with Hunter, talking about the fund balance and trying, you know, and understanding the fund balance. We can talk about it if, if you'd like, but there is an explanation on page 17, and we just kind of thought we could all live this previously.
Mr. Cale?
The issue isn't to, wasn't exactly, the point I was trying to make was the number. The issue was that the school managed to have a fund balance which only grows if none of the carryover was used and there were additional savings. That's the only way the fund balance can grow. So, you've demonstrated an ability to manage your finances in difficult times vis-à-vis the way the fund balance has grown. So, I was just wanting to know, given that ability to do that, wouldn't it be possible to manage it in the same way going forward? After all, for up to 2011, except for one year from 2001, every year there was an increase in the fund balance, that is to say, the school fund balance reserve, if you like, which means the carryover wasn't spent and there was savings on top of that. Now, you did mention the one year of the VRS holiday, but there's still, you know, eight or nine other years that indicate that you have that capability. That's, that's the point I'm trying to get across, not the actual specific number.
Okay.
Other councilor?
I will tell you, and I think I've told you guys this before, in, in this year, that the school board is, has had first reading and will have discussion and second reading on a policy, school board policy about management of our fund balance and our contingency in order to be more transparent with the community and make it easier for people to understand because people just find it hard. We'd like to make it simple. Okay?
Mr. Mayor? Sorry. Could I ask, Dr. Duncan?
One question about that. So, in your proposed budget, is there a line item for restoration of some amount of the fund balance, or call it what you want?
No, there is a line item for contingency, which is always.
Contingency, but that's different.
In our budget.
You're not.
Yeah, but there, no, there is not. There's not. In fact, no, I'll leave it at that. Anything else? Okay. Question 10, will the school consolidate any departments with the city? This is, I'm going to try to give you a brief answer and then I'll entertain questions. We have already consolidated functions with the city. We share our attorney, John Foster, who gives good service to us. The challenge is that he's not an education attorney, so we have other attorneys we need to call in on matters particular to our education issues. But on general issues, he does a terrific job for us, for sure. A few years ago, we gave up our communications director and consolidated that, that with the city. I have to say, that didn't go as well. We essentially got no services from the city. And so, we've been kind of doing as we can with other communications folks that we have. So, I'd say our experience in consolidating with the city has been mixed. I think the things that Mr. Cale and you specifically pointed out, or maybe I'm making that up, were finance, technology, and human resources, for example. The last time this consolidation topic came to my attention was, I guess, probably a year ago now, I'm not sure, but it was a while ago. And in talking to Mr. Shields about this topic, I told him that the school board would be happy to consider consolidating departments, so long as the assumption was not that they would all be consolidated under the city manager. That if there were departments where the school board was running more efficiently or where we thought we could do a better job, that those could be consolidated under the school board rather than the city manager. And I don't think I've heard anything about the topic since then. I would say that we feel like we do a good job in human resources for 500 staff. We have about two and a half folks who administer that. That's exceedingly lean, particularly when you consider the, the licensure we have to check, the benefits we have to keep, the background and security checks we have to do on every single individual who enter our, our schools. So, we don't see that we could be much more lean. However, since we have about, a little bit more than twice as many employees as the city does, if the city would want to entertain having us manage HR for you, we're not dying to do it, but we could certainly look at that. We feel like we have more experience in doing that than the, than the city would have since our staff is much larger and we have more unique kinds of positions. I know there was a study, I guess about a year and a half ago on IT and the discussion about centralizing IT functions. Once again, I think at the end of the day, based on my conversations in that study, we found that the school's IT department was more well-developed than that of the city. And so, you know, we also have, in addition to basic infrastructure needs, we have instructional needs, so we have a whole area of technology that the city's not familiar with. So, once again, you know, I think the city staff is smaller. If the city would like to consolidate IT under the schools, we would love to do it, but we certainly discuss that. We just kind of feel like there are things that we do that are critical to us that we do better than is still on the other side. I would say that we're very proud of the fact that we run a lean administrative machine. This year, we spend 6% on administration. We've taken that down to 4% for next year. Our head of curriculum, who is on Tony's leadership team, also is our head of HR, our head of finance, is also our head of operations. So, we don't have a bunch of, everybody's wearing two or three hats over on the school side, and I think they're doing a good job of it, as is reflected by the small amount of money that we spend on administration.
Mr. Cale?
Thank you. I don't have more questions. Normally, I prefer not to try to review stuff at the table. It's really not a good practice, but we have this session. I reserve the right to further clarifications. I reserve the right to further clarifications and further inputs, uh, outside of what was discussed today. I mean, in addition, if I see something in the numbers or the explanation, it doesn't make any sense.
No, this is your last chance. No more clarifications, no more questions. Um, are there any more questions about that? I mean, honestly, we're happy to talk about consolidating things. We've consolidated things before. I'm sure that we'll be doing things in the future, but there are things that are core to us that we think do a really good job of, we're very efficient at, we're not quite sure what would be gained.
I mean, I, I think there may be some utility based on what you've described as far as any of the items that could be consolidated from the city to the schools. That, that might be something that Tony and Wyatt should sit down and talk about.
I agree.
Speaking for myself, I don't have a preference on where it lies, as long as it makes sense, and there may be other functions that the schools would want to transfer, consider transferring. I don't know if those conversations have happened, but I think the notion of consolidating and trying to look for shift efficiencies, um, especially with what's going on with water perhaps, and, um, et cetera, is always a good thing for us to reevaluate. And the same thing probably goes for contracts that we're doing.
Well, no, we have some consolidated contracts. We have consolidated contracts, for instance, for IT support. Manscaping. Manscaping, so we're doing some of that.
But even health benefits, life benefits, that, that type of thing, wherever we can try to piggyback off each other's contracts, um, or health benefits, or other, um, personnel benefits, it, it may be helpful to do that. I know that the city, um, reviewed, again, I think it's before this, this council, um, several councils ago, I think, we went back and looked at either life or health, and we were able to realize some big cost savings, so we put into place a, a system of reviewing the, those contracts on a biannual basis, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, or, or on some schedule.
Okay. Do you have any comments about that?
Does that, is that something that other council members think is worthwhile for? And again, it wouldn't be, uh, something that the council would take up, or the school board would take up. I think it's a staff responsibility.
I think Lisa had a comment, actually. She's, um, curriculum innovation and personnel for us, just so that you'd understand the health benefit.
Good evening. I was just saying currently, our health insurance is with the city. We, we both use COG, which is a group to help us, um, get better rates, um, each year. So, we've been doing that since, for the last...
Ten, fifteen years, right, Hunter?
Longer than that, twenty years.
Longer than that, yeah, but we, we do work pretty closely with the HR staffs for the city and, and the schools work together as far as the city retirement and VRS and all of that. And we help each other out if, because we have more VRS employees, so I'm talking to Bev and Beverly and Richard on that, as well as city, city retirement. So, we, we really do work close together.
Thanks, Lisa. You're welcome. Thank you, Lisa.
If I could just note also, there's been a lot of discussion about consolidation of services through the years. We do a lot of things together, and a lo- I think we do a lot of things very effectively together, probably more so than most, most jurisdictions in Virginia. Um, when we did last look seriously at structural consolidations in the area of HR and finance and IT in particular, the, um, what I believe happened at that time was that the city council set aside funds to help us with some consultant services. Uh, the then superintendent and I worked through a scope of work for that consultancy, and provided recommendation to both the school board and, and the city council to proceed with that, and the school board, uh, did decide not to proceed with that study. There was no prejudgment as to where those functions would be housed, either with the general government or with the schools, but I think there was a view, um, at that time that perhaps because of transition issues, uh, or for other reasons, that the school board did not want to proceed with that study. It is something that I have thought, uh, has attractions to it, primarily, uh, from a, um, a greater effectiveness perspective, not necessarily a cost efficiency perspective, but, um, if you, if you consolidated those services, you might actually be able to provide a higher level of service, and possibly re-realize some financial savings as well. Both of these, both of our functions and all, and all those three areas are very lean. That was discussed the other day in terms of some of our risk exposure, um, which I think is accurate. Um, so, in terms of cost savings, maybe not major cost savings, but could we provide a higher level of service? I think that opportunity still exists, and so, if the opportunity, um, is there to study that, I think we probably would benefit from outside help to guide us through that. The fir- former superintendent and I spent hours working through it together, but there's some, just some knotty issues that, that you have to work through, that, uh, it's helpful to have an independent view of it to give, give us both advice.
Mr. Cal?
Uh, thank you. Just to make it clear, uh, it doesn't have to be costly. If you're gonna, if you can get a, an improvement in service at no additional cost, that's a good thing in itself, because not everything can generate specific dollar value reductions, but if you're spending the same amount of money and getting a better service, that certainly is a, is a wor- worthwhile, uh, uh, objective.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else on the consolidation point?
All right. Um, the next question was from, uh, Ms. Barry. Does the transfer show debt service? Um, the transfer, uh, is to our operating budget. It is not for debt service. Um, that is separate. Um, we also have some transfer into our community service budget. Um, so, the answer to that would be no. I did ask Dr. Jones to continue to work with the city to try to parse out school capital costs, and I think you, we were handed something just as we sat down this evening. I haven't had a chance to look at it, but I think we were handed something this evening that talks about school capital costs. So, we'll take a look at that.
Yeah, and I think that's the bottom of the chart, right? What's the school portion?
Yeah, I think this is the bottom of this. Yep. It shows a total from FY two thousand and seven till year-to-date, this year, of a little bit more than five million dollars for the capital cost for schools.
And let me be clear on this chart. Those are actual numbers. There's the prob- higher number, higher figures have been encumbered, but this is what has been expended based on the financial report we're on this, uh, run today.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. Um, what are the IB program statistics? Those are, um, on page twenty-four. This, these are the statistics for the baccalaureate program, um, diploma program at the high school. As you know, we have the international baccalaureate program, starting with pre-K up through elementary. We're going to continue at the middle school to implement it, and then all through the high school. So, we are an IB division, pre-K through twelve, but these statistics are the, the ones we thought you were, um, referring to. Any questions about that? Okay.
Any questions about IB?
I have to say, we, um, we continue to be, you know, very proud of this program, and particularly because we have, uh, so many students who participate in it as either full diploma or, or class takers, and we have one poor guy at the high school who administers the whole thing, so it's, um, he really does a terrific job. Um, how many children receive free, reduced-priced meals? You see here, it's about a hundred and thirty-three. Um, I asked Tony also to provide you with the costs that the school board absorbs to subsidize meals for students each year. This is a program we started several years ago, so, you know, children would be hungry, and it's about three thousand dollars. It's amazingly inexpensive to provide good nourishing meals for kids who need them, um, not just during school, but in the summer, and then, um, we have donors who support our backpack program, so that is no expense to us at all. Um, and then, um, the, the question fourteen, a simple answer, no, the school resource officer is not in our budget. That's, that sits in, um, your police department budget because they are, uh, law enforcement. Um, we do have, uh, you know, at a couple of our schools, uh, security, and those do sit in our budget.
And those were newly added?
Those are newly added this semester. I mean, yeah, the high school, but we added at the elementary schools, um, after the first of the year.
While, while we're on that, just a little off-budget topic, how's that been working out?
I'll give you my answer, and then other people can answer as well. I, I, um, one of the great pleasures during this budget, so, one of the, well, maybe the only pleasure during the budget cycle each year, is that I get to go into each of the schools and meet with the staff and hear what their concerns are. And this year, when I went to, uh, both TJ and Mount Daniel, I had an opportunity to see that new, um, uh, the new security officers at work, and it was absolutely great. Um, they fit right into the school. Um, they are, um, uh, the kids are used to them and treat them like staff. The parents have gotten to rely on them. It's just, I think, worked out wonderfully, um, from everyone's perspective. It's just, it's just great. And in talking to the teachers, uh, the teachers feel more secure having that person in the school trained to know what to do in case there's a problem.
Can I just add a point there?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I agree with all that Susan mentioned. I think we probably would have had a request for adding some administrative staff at the elementary schools, uh, if we had not brought in the security folks, because they, they happen to, uh, take some pressure off of the secretarial and, and other folks who, who or, who otherwise would be greeting people and, and ferreting out who's, who's who. Since we have the security folks, uh, we have, we haven't had to increase that staff.
Thank you. Thanks, sorry about the tangent.
Anything else about that? Okay. Next question was about park and rec facilities the schools are using. I'm going to turn that over to Tony to talk to you about what they are, because she knows a whole bunch more about that than I do. But I did want to, uh, remind you folks that, um, back soon after Wyatt's budget was presented, I did send over a memo to all of you explaining those orphan things in the budget and kind of the school board's perspective. Tony, do you want to talk about, about the facilities that Park and Rec uses of ours, and how we use city facilities, and how all that works, and maybe Wyatt has some comments to make as well?
Um, I think we try to be very cognizant, both city and schools, because I hear a lot of people say nickel and dime, is that, is that where we're headed? And I think it's a mis- it's kind of a misunderstanding about how we use the facilities. The only facility we use is the football field. We pay for all of the upkeep, we pay for all the electricity, we fully take care of the field, um, and we are the big users of that field, so we don't mind doing that. Um, in, in, in regards to park and rec, um, uh, we do not charge rent for the field, and I think it's really important to get that, um, out there, because people were under the impression, some, somewhere along the discussion, that we charge rent. And I actually just brought tonight, because I feel like, I just want you to understand that this is last year, these are all, there's eighty-eight pages of all of the activities that go on in our, our building during the course of a year. I mean, it's phenomenal amount of park and rec, and all that, uh, in working with the city, they pay, because at night, we don't have the custodial staff to go in and clean up, you know, all of this for custodial, and they pay a portion of their electric, and that's it. Um, and we do that for each other. And part of the, I think in the memo, and it references it, is what we were looking to do this year, is that our first request was either have it as a separate line item, because that, and I actually have the amount in front of me somewhere, it's around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, looks like it's part of our operational money, which for us is two teachers, but it's not. Um, what we have traditionally done on the school side is in the transfer, they would transfer the one eighty, and then we take care of the custodial and electric for the city. Um, what the city in return does for us, when we use fuel from the city, when we go to the bus barn, there are about four big items for us. When we have police officers that work our games, they bill us quarterly. And so, what we were looking to do this year was just do our billing quarterly, and really the only reason that we were looking to do that was so, it didn't look like it was operational funding for us, because it was sending the wrong message to the community, like we had another hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Um, so, that's, that's how park and recs work. Well, I, and I think we're very respectful of each other's facilities, and when we have a small meeting in somebody's room, um, whether that's our, the gang of eight, or that's this meeting tonight, we don't bill each other for rental of, of using a classroom or something of that nature. It's really our big expenses that each one of us share with one another, and we respect that. So, like, our gas to run the buses is a lot, and so, we actually get billed quarterly for that. Um, and that's the park and rec. Did you want to address either one of the other on the memo?
Tony, may I?
Uh-huh, absolutely.
I think it's also important to understand that before the school board sent its budget request over to Wyatt to, to put before, for the city council, that the board did, um, eliminate, reduce the city transfer to the community service fund by the amount, uh, it was about a hundred and, I believe about a hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars, uh, which, as Dr. Jones said, was for scheduling...
One sixty-six.
Okay, for, for one sixty-six. It was for, you know, for scheduling for custodians, building, supervision, and, and utilities. They actually, uh, reduced their city transfer request to the community service fund to significantly less than it is this year and in prior years. Um, and the intention was that those, those funds would be, would be provided to rec and parks so that, um, so basically, the resource to provide the, the, um, the funds when, when the quarterly, or whenever, how often, however frequently the bill went over, would be available to, to rec and parks.
Anything else on this point? Mr. Cal?
Uh, when you get to that, I'd like to go back to those questions, though. I'd like to use the opportunity to speak.
Okay, that's fine. Anything else on parks and recs?
Okay. I thought I already told you, no more questions. The last question that, uh, Ms. Barry submitted was, are there plans to tear down MEH? No. No. No, there are not. There are no plans. I know that you've seen our facilities plan, which is about this thick, and there is nothing in there about tearing down MEH. And in our CIP request this year, in fact, we, quite the opposite, we asked in an out year for money to add a wing onto MEH when it runs out of space for students, so we're not planning to tear down. Wyatt, have you heard that rumor? I guess so. Or are you starting that rumor?
I think we're trying to put that to bed.
Yeah, yeah.
I think that might have been the purpose of that question.
Yeah, yeah. I would also say, just as long as we're on this topic, and the mayor and I have had a conversation about this, and we touched on this a, a little bit at our last work session when our planning commission colleagues were here, um, it, it would be helpful for us all to agree whether or not there are other lands in the city for school facilities so that folks can decide to love our facilities plan or not. I think there are folks in the city who think that there are other lands that could be given to the schools through condemnation or some other means that would allow us to have a very strategic and broad facilities plan for our schools. Um, and, and we don't think that's the case, and so, we're putting together the best facilities plan we can, based on the land constraints that we have and the number of kids we need to put in desks and seats. So, um, clarification of that would be really helpful at some point, perhaps. Um, did you have another question before I make my, before I go over this last chart?
Mr. Cal, ahead.
Again, this is, we have just gotten this, so that we're a little bit of a disadvantage trying to respond to your responses, okay? Uh, and I was re- reading more carefully the, uh, um, VRS update.
Mm-huh.
Uh, there's only one number where there's a difference. The hundred percent funding of current retirees was never an issue, that was always agreed to. The thirty points of the change in actuary assumptions is different than what I had received in writing, so I'll have to go back to Barry and find out what's specific in the mathematics on that. The plan overall of VRS has declined from sixty-six point six percent funding to sixty-two point four, which is quite bad. Below eighty percent is considered a serious problem, and I'm really talking about, this is why we talk about the VRS pension for the teachers. And the key number, that is exactly the one that I came up with, Connie, is that active employees are just twenty-five percent funded. The active employees are seventy-five percent unfunded, so for every dollar they've put in, or has been put in for them, they're only getting twenty-five cents back at the moment in terms of retiree benefits. So, the, the actual disagreement is just one number. This is consistent with the information, uh, that I, that I received. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other council members?
Um, the last, in the last two sheets, you have it in front of you. Yes?
Could I just, I mean, I just wanted to mention, just because this VR issue has been one that has come up often, that it, you have to mention that Mr. Faison also has a sentence in here, or a paragraph, that talks about the funding for the retirement benefits is typically accrued over the working lifetime of plan members. It's true with almost any accrued benefits program, um, and he even goes on to state that he feels like there's sufficient time for available market returns and anticipated future contributions to close any current gap. So, while I agree with you, I mean, I suspect there are many of us that sit here at the table right now who are doing, uh, pension contributions that are not fully covered... who are doing pension contributions that are not fully covered and will be covered by future employees doing the same. So I, I don't know what else we can do other than when the CFO of the organization says that our current fund assets are 100% for the current retirees and that they feel like we're going to be okay with our present employees. What else do we do?
Do I want to respond to that?
Sure.
Okay, this is something I had mentioned. It was originally, well, it's going to be very difficult now, but two years ago, I suggested that there be a separate reserve for VSR pensions. That was initially rejected by the school board. Later on it was adopted, but then budget pressures have reduced it. That would be the way to go. We need a separate fund for VRS pensions.
Anything else? All right. Thank you very much. I did just sign, I didn't know this was here, but I did just sign for your reading pleasure on page 22. Areas of consolidation between the city and the general government. It is in there. I didn't realize that. The last couple of pages that are in the packet that I would draw your attention to, that would be pages 27 and 28. Page 27, on the top is a chart of average class size across various age groups in Arlington, Alexandria, Fairfax and Falls Church. And you'll see in the elementary school, Falls Church's class sizes are larger than anyone else's. In the middle school, slightly larger than, I don't know who this school is, Fairfax, but much larger than Arlington and Alexandria, who are our competitive set. And then in the high school, much larger than Arlington and Alexandria. Fairfax has a little bit higher class sizes in the high school. And this is the result of the line we've been holding on our budget over the last four years is these class sizes are, are way high. Back in the day, in Falls Church, our elementary class sizes were more like 20 students. They're now 24 on the way to 25, 26. So things have gone up dramatically and need to be fixed.
Susan, on, on this chart, on the average class size, do we have any historical data on this? On the comparisons with the other school districts?
You can go back and get it.
We can go back. We don't have a witness tonight, but we can sure go get it.
Yeah, sort of showing where, you know, we might have been in school parlay more competitive and maybe look at sort of how the funding played out in that, if there's a direct correlation between funding and these numbers. One would think that there would be, but not necessarily depending on what was happening.
I mean, as my friend Ron Pepe will tell you, there are direct correlations and they're only, it's 85% of the budget, right, is people, is teachers. And when you reduce class sizes, it means you've hired teachers and other support staff as well. So there will be a correlation. The second chart here is from the 2013 Washington area Boards of Education guide that Ron mentioned previously. Average salary for a Novogradyan teacher. You'll see that Falls Church falls pretty dramatically behind our competitive set Arlington and Alexandria. This is the second thing we need out of the budget money we're requesting is to begin to get our teachers' competition back up. One of the good things we've been doing over the past year and a half is a compensation study with our staff to try to find ways to uniquely compensate our Falls Church staff to keep them with us. The bad news about that is they're all very aware now of the fact that they're way underpaid compared with surrounding jurisdictions because we've had to look at that. And so retention is getting more and more difficult by the day. In fact, if you look at the last page here, 28, this is a side by side comparison between Falls Church and Arlington County. We've adjusted it for VRS payments, which are kind of hinky based on the general assembly's changes to the VRS last year. And I won't take you through that unless you have a question. But if you look, I mean, literally every lane and every step, our teachers are underpaid compared with Arlington and in some instances dramatically, particularly in the masters lanes for experienced masters teachers, which are our most effective teachers. So if you want people to come and stay here and be great teachers, we need to fix that. And then the last chart is one that you've probably seen before, which simply shows you that with a fully funded request this year, we'll still be spending less per student than we were back in 2007 here in the city of Falls Church. And then of course, you know, as with things on the general government side with inflation, you know, it's really more like 11,000 and change, not 14,000 that we're spending for student in the city. And so that's our story and we're sticking to it. We got 25% more kids. I think that, as I mentioned last time, we always talk about this as though this is a great expense and, and problem for the city that we have families moving here with their kids. I happen to think that our schools are one of the greatest assets of the city and it would be a bigger problem if families weren't moving here with their children because if people were not moving here with their children for our schools, I think that our housing values would be much lower and that would be a bigger hit to our budget. But we have had this huge increase. We haven't had anywhere near the funding to keep up with that increase nor the same percentage of the city budget. The last thing I want to tell you, and I thought Tony might have something about it tonight, but she doesn't, and that is Tony has found a consultant who's expert in how school results affect property values. And we had hoped to have him come visit us this spring and help us quantify in our city the effect our schools have on our property values because that seems to be a question here and there. He was busy and not able to schedule. So we will have him come in and take a look at that to answer a question that many of us have had for many years as if there's something beyond anecdotal. But, but Tony and Hunter have put together just an, an interesting study because we were trying to figure out if, if there was something beyond anecdotal. And Tony, I'm going to let you present this since you've done this work.
Susan, it wasn't, for me, the question wasn't whether it was a plus to the housing values. But the point I've been trying to make is that the value of the house or it's, is not uniformly the same for all individuals. It depends on your equity status, your cash flow status. There's a whole bunch of other things. It wasn't that it's, yes, it's a plus for the housing values, but the importance to individual households are not the same.
Of course not. Of course not. And that wasn't even your question I was responding to. I just, as I go around the town, as I've gone around the town ever since I've lived here, people have kind of assumed that our housing values are higher than anywhere else because of our excellent school system. But nobody can quantify it. We think, as you can see, Tony and I are kind of quantifiers and we're trying to quantify as many things as we can. And that's one thing we'd like to quantify, just so that we all have it, you know, when we're planning. So I'm sorry, Tony, go ahead.
Well, I, I mean, I think if you've been at any of the forums, which almost all of you have, and even at our last joint meeting, we've talked a lot about where our children are coming from and the value of, of schools. And we're just trying to drill down on a lot of the data. And this is, this was just an interesting, and I know I mentioned it once before with Welcome Drive because one side of the street is Fairfax and the other side is Falls Church City. And so we went out and pulled all of the assessed records so that we could look on the same street because then it takes away those factors. For instance, that everybody that lives on that street can still come to our great cultural events. They can still access the city. They have access to all the wonderful things that Falls Church City has to offer. They just live on one side of the street and so the value of the house is assessed differently. And so as we move forward, and I know Susan just mentioned working with Dr. Brazington, who's out of Carolina, who goes in and really looks at the economic value of schools. And I've been studying his work. And again, we did try to contract him, but in this budget season, it's, it's a very time crunch for him. But we hope to bring you more data about the value of schools and, and looking at things like SAT scores, for instance. Our students perform well above average. And we know that there's quite a bit of research out there that says for every standard deviation, which is a certain quantifiable amount on any, any given test, that it's 7.1% increased to your housing value. So we really want to drill down so that we can bring you more data like that. And we're working on that right now.
I just want to check. So your sample's 11, 11 households?
We, Hunter, and you can, we went down the street. Literally drove down the street.
This isn't meant to be expansive, but just to give you a data point.
And I would say.
While we wait for someone else to pick up this.
This is not a study. It is a very superficial cursory analysis of just to say what if in a starting place and just to try to identify one area where you could compare comparable properties and houses and just, just take, take a look at them. It's very, it's very superficial. We are not assessors. It's based on the assumption that the Fairfax assessors and the Falls Church assessors are assessing in, in the same way and looking at the properties the same way. I don't know that.
I'm sure, I mean, it's, it's clearly anecdotal, but having worked with statistics, when you get a small sample, if there's anomalies that one side of the street was developed a couple of years later than the other, it's, and the housing stock is different. It's very easy for the numbers to be biased sharply one way or the other because of the small sample. So maybe the expert will have a better idea of how to equalize the values.
Well, and I think what would be, would be awesome if we could pair with the city and the city would pull this data on all of the housing information. And maybe we can, you know, look at, because Mr. Kimball and I were talking about that today, that we are pulling a lot of data on, on houses and housing information and it's not our expertise area. So we would absolutely welcome the city contracting to do some of this portion to work with us.
And for the record, it's a sample of 22. I concur.
Thanks, Ms. Berry.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the, the data that you put together. I, I do think this has some value actually as a beginning to, I think, make the case to the larger community. And I'm going to be sort of passing on questions that have come to us in emails from constituents and that we heard the other night at the League of Women Voters session, which I thought was really good. And thank you for the schools for, for participating and providing such good data. You know, one of the questions I get is, you know, when you look at our tax rate, it proposed 133 and that doesn't even include the stormwater stuff, that we're beginning to be, the difference between us and surrounding jurisdictions is starting to get larger and larger. And so if you use that, that number, it raises the obvious question about why. And then secondly, it, it suggests that it's going to get greater and greater to the extent that it may start to affect people's buying decisions as to whether, if they don't have kids in the schools, as to whether the difference in tax rate and cost is of value to them. So I'm putting these on the table, not necessarily for a reaction tonight, but I think you've prepared your materials very well. But there continue to be a lot of people in the community that are still not either, probably aren't quite getting the kind of information we are. So I think there's a collective issue of describing the value that the schools provide to those without kids in the schools, which is sort of a simplistic way to describe it. It's not to say that there aren't many people with kids not in the schools that are willing to pay. There are some that aren't and there are sort of repetitive questions we get. So I actually find this a very interesting initial cut at this. The second chart that, that I think you prepared tonight, which is really good, is the, the one in development that suggests that really depending on how you calculate the school costs, some of these developments look far less attractive than the city's model apparently shows. And that's your, your chart, your page number two, where the school generation is assumed by the, the city to be 60 using Pearson model. It could be nearly double that. And if you use the Oakwood model, it's much more even than that. So I think that really is useful data as we look at development projects. And we have to be very careful about the numbers that we're using for net fiscal impact. So I think that continues to be a useful discussion point. Can you suggest any ways to sort of smooth out this increase? I mean, it, it's sort of, and I, I think we did. I mean, having served on prior councils, we do, really did try to meet the schools' requests for funding in the past. And, and I think we pretty much did that. We both suffered a major downturn as a result of the financial crisis that affected both general government and the schools, but we have tried to recover. And so the thing that I'm a little bit concerned about is two things. Long-term trends that put us dramatically different from surrounding jurisdictions. And then the rate shock this year of doing it all in one year rather than finding a more smooth way to work through these increases in, in the future. And then some questions, I, I think, you know, about, and that I think is in your, your data, but what will the class sizes be with your funding request versus now? What is the payment increase for teachers? And one of the things that I've heard in the past about the comparative teacher salary numbers is that they don't include the add-ons that you can get in Falls Church for doing various things. So I don't know if that affects those numbers at all. So those are the kinds of questions. The other one I heard was the spending per pupil. A lot of people don't, that may be relevant in education circles, but a lot of people not in education circles don't really relate to that number particularly well. They think that efficiency ought to mean that you're spending less per student. So I've heard that as well. So these are all things which if we can work through together to provide answers, to sort of find ways to collectively deal with things because, you know, it's, there's no question, and I experienced that when you have kids in the schools here, this is, it, it's both an incredibly high quality education, but it's also a financial bargain. It, it is. It's nowhere near what an equivalent private school would be for one student, let alone two. So again, it's collectively, it's doing our best to listen to people that aren't accepting these messages. Why is it? What is it? What can we do to better inform? What can we do to moderate rate shocks, if you will? And how do we collectively work through so we don't break what has so far been a community consensus in support of the schools? So again, these are, these are just questions that, that I have received and that I get from the community as I'm out and about talking to people. And efficiency measures regarding the schools, do you, do you have any that would be useful? Because I often hear we're spending too much on various things. So I, I'm, I'm sure you can provide that as well. So this is more in the nature of just a discussion rather than particular, you know, particular, certainly no demands, but a particular, you know, set of requests. And we can work through these as we continue to work through the, the budget collectively.
Yeah, let me just respond to a couple of those things because I can. Maybe my colleagues will have some responses as well. First, with regard to this page two with the developments on it, Tony and Wyatt are working closely to look at the city's model. And the school board is, is hoping to get more detailed information. The school board wants to be as supportive of economic development in the city as we can possibly be because for all of us it makes sense to do the right developments. And so we are working on that. With regard to smoothing out, the mayor and I've had conversations about this. You and I've had conversations about this. I'm, you know, other city council members, I've had conversations about this. And I have to tell you, this is a very difficult question for the school board. I mean, we have, we spent work session after work session after work session looking at every one of the things that was funded and trying to figure it out. And I have to say for me personally, and you may have heard me say this before in this cycle, this year it's overwhelming what the needs are that are unfunded for the schools. And this is, as I said, we're, we're complicit with you in doing this, right? We've worked together closely over the last four years during the tough times to really cut things to the bone. And had we not had so many additional children, this would all be much simpler. But, but, but you can see we have that many more children. You can see that our class sizes are that large. With the budget we're proposing, we'll get down to, what we expect will be 24. And if we have growth during the year, 25. So we aren't going to get anywhere close to the small class sizes we used to have with this particular budget. And we're not going to get anywhere close to the compensation our teachers deserve compared to their peers. So we kind of view this as stepping into it because also we're going to be seeing more students in the next several years, right? And so we kind of got to the point where we felt like we had taken out of the budget what we could and that this is the, the request that will help us kind of take the first step to get back to the right class sizes and prepare ourselves to begin to kind of get a hold of things. And we understand that, that things are still not perfect, although I have asked the, Tony to ask Mr. Shields for this chart that's in your budget on page three back a few years. Because I'm curious myself. I mean, and I know we, you know, the city's revenue has gone up. I mean, and I know we, you know, the city's revenue has gone up dramatically during that time, and I myself, I'm curious about kind of what's going to the schools and what's going to savings and what's going to other places. I do understand that there are people in the city that don't have children in the schools. And the ones that talk to me, I'd say, a third of them say, I don't get anything from the schools, which is why we're trying to quantify the economic benefit of the schools. We think that's the best way to talk to that audience. And we really wish we'd been able to get that quantified for you now. We'll do our best to get it done. I have to say, two-thirds of those people tell me that they're supportive of the schools because they understand it does support the value of their real estate. And I'd have to say also that, that, you know, most of those two-thirds, and they're not all, have had kids in the school, right? And so I think if you look at the people in the community who will have kids in the schools, do have kids in the schools, or did have kids in the schools, like me, I don't have kids in the schools any longer, I think that's the majority of the city. And for the most part, when I talk to those people, they understand the values the schools bring. But we're always looking for new in different ways to help them understand that. I think the things that surprised us this year as we started on our budget journey were the things that, the charts that we're showing you here, right? 25% increase in students. I mean, that's dramatic. Huge gap in funding. We hadn't really put that together in the past few years. And once we did, we said, no wonder our class sizes are large, no wonder our teachers' compensation is so low, no wonder our buses are breaking down and being towed, and we had to get new buses. I mean, you know, these things all go together. We hadn't put together that, where the schools used to get about 46% of the budget on a pretty routine basis, you know, we're now down to about 40. Now, it doesn't sound maybe so much to you, but it's 700,000 a percent. You know, that's real money to pay for teachers and to do the things we need in schools. And so, you know, we're just trying to kind of, we could well have come back and said, we need 49 or 50, and we still wouldn't be where we need to be, but we're trying to be as reasonable as we can with the first step. Because we've just have had a lot of student growth at a time when the budget's been cut to the bone. There just isn't a lot of, you know? And luckily for us, we have community partners that are helping us out, the daycare parents, you know, helping us with $100,000 for play equipment for the schools. PTA is the Education Foundation, the boosters, you know, helping us with $350,000 in the operating budget. I mean, not to mention what the boosters do in terms of lighting our fields and those kinds of things, which is much more than that. So we feel like we've tapped into community resources that are available to us through our affiliated organizations and others to try to, you know, squeeze down, squeeze down, squeeze down, squeeze down. But we got kids, you know, we got 25, 26 kids in a room that's built for, you know, 23 and 24. We got classes as big as 30 at the high school. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, you can just do the math, and it's pretty simple. 500 more kids and very, you know, not very many more teachers, six, eight more teachers, you know, and it, you got big classes, and you got kids that don't get the attention that they need. The other thing that's a part of this is that there are, there are things that we're required by law to spend money on that are not general classroom teachers, that must come first in this budget because of the laws and the mandates that we have, so. But I look forward to the continued discussion. We obviously want to do what's right for the city. We just, you know, happen to think that maintaining the value of the schools to help support the economic value of housing in the city, as well as to do the right thing for our kids, is the right thing.
Thank you.
Other council members? Mr. Kim.
Thank you. Building on something you said, Dave, to put it in slightly different terms, in terms of reaction of people who you speak to, basically, there are those who have cash flow problems, and the increase in the value of the house only makes it worse. And then you have those who have interest in protecting their equity, because if you got a big mortgage, you don't want to go underwater by having your house decline in value. But these same people may also have cash flow issues. That's something else. It's, if you want to reduce it to the financial side, that would be the way the calculus would take place, the number of people on their homes, the number of people who are mortgage holders, et cetera, or renters. To me, the value of the education really is not related to the value of the housing. It has a value all to its own. And I understand why the argument, or the discussion is often geared toward housing values, but the case for education, I think, stands on its own more than anything else. As to this table, I could, it's nice to know what the projections are for North Kent Lincoln and Rushmark. I don't know that how much it's gonna mean in terms of projections going out. Oakwood is really just, we have, the two ones at the bottom are outliers. I'm not sure why they're there. Oakwood is an older building that has, I suspect its own story on why so many students are there. And Pearson, we know, was a condo that was converted into apartments, which will be a self-liquidating problem, hopefully, in a couple of years when it reverts back to the condos, which generally have fewer students than the apartments. So I'm not sure what the two at the bottom are there to represent. The others, I don't know. But I would thought that the city's fiscal model was pretty good, in the Byron, the Spectrum, and some of the other ones, where the model had been applied were reasonably accurate. But you can check that out, Wyatt.
Yeah, that is correct. For all of the mixed-use projects that have been approved to date, the model has been very accurate on those projections, with the exception of Pearson Square. And in terms of this data, this is the first time we've seen it, but also the Pearson Square in terms of these updated numbers. And so we'll look at them, and Tony and I got together last week to review numbers and sort of talk about what we're seeing and what she's seeing, and to try to make sure that we're giving the best information to the council as you go through land use decisions and capital planning and other decisions. So we'll continue to do that.
Dave, other council members?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Duncan.
Thank you. I hadn't planned to talk about this, and I won't, but just for a second. But looking at those numbers, you know, they're basically conservative and middle-of-the-road and, you know, highly unlikely to happen. And yet, even within that range, the number of new kids who would be generated in a highly unlikely scenario is 186, which still works out to, you know, 10 or 12 a grade level, and is a very small percentage of the overall student enrollment growth that will occur as the single-family houses turnover. And we don't need to talk about that anymore, because I say that every time, so we all know that. Questions I wanted to ask were, your ask for this year, where does it put you on the chart here on this page, percent of general fund revenue? So right now, at the end of this fiscal year, we're at 40.5%. So if you got, if you got what's in the budget, what would the number go up to?
It's about 46.
So, so it would go up in the next fiscal year to 46? Okay, that's helpful. The other two questions are facilities-related. Does any scenario that you envision have central office going somewhere where you don't have to pay rent?
Tents? I'm just gonna say, my backyard, I have a big spot behind my deck, as you know, then you could put a tent there, and you could be refreshed in the summertime when it was hot.
I mean, I'm just, I'm asking that because you've been in this office building, and maybe you like it, and maybe your scenario doesn't include that, or maybe as we build new facilities, it would. It isn't an area of, you know, consolidation, I suppose, savings?
Yeah, that's not a decision that's been made. Certainly, there's an opportunity to discuss when we do something with George Mason.
Okay, but you're not.
To put central office in that school.
Okay, you're open to the discussion.
Oh, absolutely. There's just, there's not room at TJ, there's just not room at Mount Daniel.
No, 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 I understand. No, I'm not suggesting you put it in a current school, but, okay, that's.
I just personally would like to see our central office in a school. That's just me, one person.
Okay, good, okay. Well, that's all I really wanted to know. And the Cherry Street property, if that's gone ahead with, who holds the title of that land? Do we give that to the school board? Do the city hang on to it? How's, how are we thinking we're gonna handle that?
That's a good question.
The reason I ask is because I've heard, you know, some people speculate that, you know, it'll be a nice facility for some number of years, but at some point down the road, you know, we might have other plans, or we might have another facility that we might move that use to, and then it would become a very valuable property for a private daycare center. I mean, it would have value that somebody could, you know, realize. So if we haven't decided, I just wanted to ask.
I would say, based on the demographics that we're looking at, the number of students we're expecting, it would be quite some time before we'd ever have another use for that piece of land, because we're gonna be, we're gonna be taxed within the land constraints we have in the city for schools to be able to accommodate the elementary school kids that we have between Thomas Jefferson and Mount Daniel.
Oh, yeah, sure, as we've discussed, I mean.
So, but that's not to say there can't be a cycle. In 30 years from now, people don't have children anymore, and we're back to the 19, you know, 80s or whenever it was, when it went way down. But that's not in our forecast.
And the plans right now for Cherry Street CIP item are this year, correct? So this gets me to a topic that's near and dear to my heart in the sense that, once we make plans, we need to either go in that direction or not go in that direction. We cannot be in the business of sinking multiple millions of dollars into a project to then think about doing something else with it in two or three years. So, Mr. Duncan, I hope that your point is that it would be sometime in the time horizon that Ms. Carney was talking about where another use would come into play.
No, we're very much, I'm planning on that. In fact, I'd like to thank Mr. Shields for recommending to City Council that you leave the money as it was, the CIP of our request, to go to Cherry Street and not do as a planning commission now, so to put it in the CIP.
So in other words, it's a decision about who's gonna own the land, is, needs to be decided pretty quickly, right?
I'm not talking about who's gonna own the land, but what the land is, is gonna be, what it's gonna be used for.
Okay, yeah, I mean, you and I are talking about different things, but both are important, obviously. So I'm for answering my question, and, yeah, I understand your question, too, sure.
And for the council's benefit, Ms. Carney and I did have some discussion about, is there any way we could increase the footprint to alleviate some of the pressure off Mount Daniel and the expansion there? And I think what came back was, after the consultants were involved in that process, that there's not a good way of expanding that unless we start incoaching into other city facilities that are right there, like the park, which gets into a whole other community discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just as a newbie, so are we gonna, you know, decide that in the next three weeks? I mean, that's, that's a decision that we're gonna go forward with by?
It's gonna be in the CIP. So what's, for some of our new colleagues here, the CIP, as far as what's in the next fiscal year, it's, the monies are being appropriated, but then there'll be contracts that will come up. But we are essentially saying to the money, this is what it's gonna be used for. That's for the current fiscal years, and then there's the outer years, which would be past '14, which the monies are more of a placeholder, it's the direction that we could want to go in. There's a little bit more flexibility at that point for what happens. But for the FY '14 year, it's pretty much the direction that we're going in.
Okay, well, the reason I ask is, you know, just having been burned by the experience of trying to put a new school on the site where the old Madison School was, I mean, I hope everybody in the neighborhood there, I mean, Craig is, you know, right down the street, I hope you're inviting everybody over for a cookout and selling them on this notion, because, you know, the worst possible scenario would be for us to decide, yeah, let's go, that's cool, and then all of a sudden, there's some huge uproar in the neighborhood as there was on Madison, that basically just stopped the thing in its tracks and set us back, you know, two years. I assume you all have figured that that's not gonna happen here.
I think the difference in this, or I, I hope the difference in this is, we've been having this conversation about Cherry for several years now, so I think the community is aware. This is a renovation or rebuild of an existing facility for children, not the removal of soccer and lacrosse practice fields and other things. And so Craig, tell me if I'm wrong, he knows his neighbors better than I do, certainly, but.
There was more, as much interest in preserving the current use in some common way as opposed to having it ripped down and something else built there. So I think all the neighbors I've talked to are understanding and, you know, accommodating. They realize there's gonna be, you know, probably differences with buses, et cetera, versus private cars, but, you know, I think we'll have to work through that.
Right. But that's certainly a reason to not be able to put the kindergarten there, right? Because that would be a much larger building.
Well, that is, that is actually what led me to ask, because when we start talking about, you know, okay, we're gonna do this, and then, you know, call you and raise you, that sets off alarm bells that makes me worry that people might get upset. Even if I thought it was a great idea, I would worry that it might cause opposition.
And that's why, before it was just even discussed loosely, Susan, Susan and I did have a conversation to see if it was even a doable option of expanding the footprint. And what, again, came back was, no, unless you do something as far as the footprint and expanding out into the park, et cetera. And that, at that point, it was, it was a done issue for me, so. But I, but I felt it important to raise it now.
Mr. Callan.
Wyatt, could you help us understand what, why did the planning commission not support the, hold on, wait, wait, before you, why they didn't support it, why you then decided that it should be supported, and what was the planning commission's reaction to your decision?
Let me speak first to the reason why I made the recommendation that I did. And I don't yet know what the planning commission's reaction to that is, because.
When did they first, what's the original reason?
Well, the, my reason was, frankly, that I viewed the decision as being made last year when that CIP was adopted. That's when we put the Easter seals on notice. They have made plans and are expending a lot of money to move out. And so I think that was a desire to implement a decision that was already made. In terms of the planning, the planning commission's views, what I've heard from the chairman of the planning commission is that their view is that, you know, with other planning, there could be a different way to deal with preschool needs in a consolidated spot. And I wasn't there to listen to their discussion and maybe, Cindy, maybe very just concisely, the planning commission's recommendation.
The planning commission wanted to look at it at a broader scale and felt like there needed to be a bigger master plan that dealt with a larger school in one place and everything consolidated. So they weren't disputing the need or the money, because they actually moved the 2.4 that was designated for Cherry Street to Mount Daniel. And so that was the message and the point they wanted to make on a 5-2 vote. The rest of the CIP was a 7-0 vote. As to what their current reaction is, I will actually be going to the planning commission formally on April 15th, although they have a memo from me to speak to them and get their reaction as part of the referral for your first reading ordinance that you just passed at last council meeting. Informally, they understood the change in the rationale back to it and anticipated it probably would go back, but they wanted to send the message about long-range planning and not just adding wings or small facilities. And they were also concerned with adding another campus for the schools to be managing and integrating the pre-K back to Mount Daniel.
If I can just ask a follow-up to that, I think it may be helpful to get the reaction from the planning commission, because we do rely on the planning commission pretty significantly when it comes to CIP items, so I think the council could definitely benefit on that front. And if there's a disagreement of views with the schools and the planning commission and what the recommendations are, I think it would behoove us to air that out.
I will be going to them on April 15th, and that's the date I've asked for referrals back to your ordinance. And I did pass on the superintendent's follow-up information that she provided to me after the planning commission conversation about master planning facilities, what could and couldn't be done at Mount Daniel.
So to my fellow council members, as we're sort of trying to identify still some levers, I think this is, this is a pretty big decision point with lots of dollars assigned to it, not everybody on the same page necessarily, and the council trying to make the best decision and the most informed decision. But there appears to at least be some disagreement on this item, so rather than just kind of letting it come in and just be decided by a vacuum, let's say, I think it's an area that we just need to decide, make sure that we understand what the pros and cons are and what the varied viewpoints are, and make a decision on it. But it doesn't sound like there's full agreement amongst our boards and commissions and certainly our elected school board. Is that, is that a fair summary? And again, this is not an item I've been closely tracking, so.
Yeah, no, I think that's fair. I alluded to this earlier. I believe that certain members of the planning commission think, they keep saying we have a Band-Aid approach to school facilities, and they would rather to see a more strategic, comprehensive approach. I think some of those members believe that there are other pieces of land around the city that we could lasso in for a more comprehensive, strategic approach. The school board doesn't believe that. I mean, we've been working on this facility since for years, right? And. And we have what we have, right, we have Mount Daniel, we have Thomas Jefferson, we have the land over at George Mason, Maryland Henderson, and it's, so, the superintendent had presented our CIP to the planning commission and asked for questions and didn't receive them, so we were a little bit surprised that they kind of took this, and I, I do, my perception of this is just me, not the school board, but my perception is that this was a signal they were trying to send to the school board to say, you know, be more comprehensive in your planning, but for us, it's quite difficult, because we have what we have, right, we have a little piece of property on Cherry, we have a little piece of property on Mount Daniel that I, we're gonna need to put kindergarten first and probably second grade on, even as it is, we have TJ, which is essentially maxed out, right, we're gonna have more than 700 kids at TJ next year, if you can imagine, Dave, I don't know how many kids were there when your, kids went there, but when mine were there, it was about half that, right? And then we have the middle school and the high school, so we don't have the luxury as you would have in Loudoun County, or maybe even Fairfax these days, I don't know, of identifying a big old piece of land and saying, we're gonna have a pre-K five, brand-new school there, right? And so, I think that was what they were trying to signal, I think to Cindy Mester's point, they, they did, they expected that this would probably be reversed and are not surprised about being reversed. Nonetheless, we're certainly happy to have conversations with them, but it would be really helpful from my perspective, and I told you this before, Mr. Mayor, if there would be clarity for the planning commission about what lands might or might not be available for the school board to consider in its, you know, kind of grandiose facilities planning. We have a plan we've put together, we think it's a good plan, we think it's a holistic plan that will take care of our pre-K kids, our K through two at Mount Daniel and TJ, and then, you know, we're all kind of gonna wait and see what happens up at, at George Mason on that piece of property, but we don't, I, I don't know of, of an alternative at this point, and we think we've, for academic and other reasons, we think this is a good solution.
Yeah, and, and, and again, for planning purposes, I think, you know, we do need to sort of put that out and deal with it, so...
Yeah, and we're ready to go on Cherry Street, I mean, we're, you know, we're getting it done over at TJ, if you haven't driven by there lately, drive by and see, it's awesome, and we're ready to get that going.
So, Mr. Shields, if you can, working with Cindy, 'cause it relates to CIP issues, just identify any properties and that can be used as a school site, I, I think that the answer to that is gonna be no, so...
Well, it's not, it's not just, it's not just a matter of the property, I mean, with enough money, you could put together pieces of property, you could do things, and I, and I, if Susan remembers, we went back and we tried to do a twenty-year plan saying, in an ideal world, how, first, we did, there's an inventory, if you go look at that report, there is a complete inventory of buildings, including privately-owned buildings that could be used, particularly when the kindergarten issue was being looked at and the daycare issue, but, but it came down to money, and unless the council wants to shift ground and say, there, there's a couple hundred million dollars, it ain't gonna happen, it's not even worth spending.
And, and I, I guess what we need to do is just reach a consensus, whether it's issuing, you know, some kind of statement that says this is where we're at, certainly, that's where I'm at, we've gone around and around on this, I don't think that there's any other facilities that can be used absent Ron's point of, well, if you expend the monies, which we can't right now, I, I think we just need to move off this and send the message to the community that this is really not a viable option, and it's not the road that we're gonna go down.
Right, I agree, I agree more.
So, i- i- if, I mean, we can have this as a point of discussion, I don't wanna decide that tonight, but if we, rather than, you know, perhaps asking Mr. Shields to look at options, just getting a consensus around this point so we can move off, is that something that the council's willing to do, and, and my, you know, I'll put my cards on the table on this one, I, I really don't think that we should be going down that rabbit hole.
Mr. Mayor, the only piece of...
And by that rabbit hole, I mean, I, I just, I think we need to close that issue, I don't think that there's other properties that are available within our financial constraints, and we need to just end the debate on that point.
The only piece of information I would be interested to hear is, I haven't heard anything lately about conversations with the supervisor and the neighbors at Mount Daniel about how they feel about anything happening there, a small addition, medium or a large addition, or no addition at all, selling the land and, you know, all going to Tahiti with it. I thought there were gonna be some conversations, if we, if, if those are allowed to be talked about, maybe we could just get an update on that whenever it's appropriate.
I think there's been some scheduling, scheduling issues there, but...
Right, we're trying to have some conversations with those.
If, if I could just add my two cents about the planning commission's vote, I would urge everybody who didn't watch the proceedings of that evening to do so, because I do think, as Ms. Carney characterized, the planning commission was trying to get our attention, I think, more than provide an alternative rationale for proceeding, and I think they expressed frustration with the process, not thinking bigger, avoiding Band-Aid approaches, but I, I think at the end of the day, not proceeding with Cherry Street doesn't seem viable, and I think the planning commission members would, would concede as much, so, I mean, we can certainly discuss it, but at the end of the day, I, I think they were trying to give us a wake-up call, and I think a valid one, so...
All right, anything else, council members? Susan?
Anybody else over here, Justin, anything else to say, Dr. Jones, Karen, any comments you'd like to make, Greg, John, Greg?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to address this. A couple of quick things, first, wanted to thank the vice mayor specifically for this approach that you've now talked about in both of our work sessions, which is this danger of losing, like, community consensus for our schools, and I think it is a real One of the things that concerns me is it seems like we're always talking about sort of one side of the coin and not the flip side of the coin, and when we're talking about ability to pay taxes, and you're asking, like, how do you justify the proposed tax rate, one of the things I would say is, we've had an explosion of income in this city, if you look at the median household income, even just in the past five years, we've lapped Loudoun County, we've passed Arlington County, city of Fairfax, and in a really big-time way, you know, we, our median household income is now, you know, over $20,000 of Arlington's, $20,000 higher per household. These aren't small numbers, and so, when you're talking about, like, how do you justify the difference, I think a part of it is that we can afford it, and what is it that we can afford? Something that's very unique, I think you pointed it out, we are fortunate in that we have this ability to fund a very unique school system, where we really believe in small schools and small classes. I think it'd be great if the rest of the country adopted our approach versus the opposite, and it's one of the things that concerns me, I mean, I know, Ira, when you're talking about, like, that there are people that have different equities, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it makes good policy sense, like, the idea that you would say to people, something like, hey, what we're gonna do is implement policies to ensure that your property values are at least stagnant, if not decreasing, to ensure that your tax liability is lower, that doesn't make good policy sense to me. I've never seen a politician that ran on a, a platform that said, I'm gonna make sure your property values go down, I just don't think that makes policy sense. So, I think there are two sides of the coin here, yes, there are people who don't want their taxes to go up, I understand that, but if we're gonna continue to support these schools, I don't see that you have many other options. I certainly think that trying to mitigate against those options and have reserve funds, like the one you just mentioned with the VRS, doesn't make a lot of sense either as a policy perspective. So, we have real data, real data, we have 500 more kids than we did five years ago, an entire TJ, right? That's for real, it's there. The VRS issue is a perceived danger, one that seems to be decreasing, per the words of our own CFO of the VRS. So, we can either choose to deal with the real issues, the things we know are here, increased enrollment, serious infrastructure problems, or we can set policies against perceptions. I think we should choose places where we see data points that are real, so, you know, I'd encourage you to consider these things, I mean, it's, there are, there is information out there that shows we can afford this, and I know it's gotta be a challenge for you guys, I don't envy your positions in that regard, but I do think we need to protect our schools, so, thanks.
All right, so, as we've done before, if there's any further questions or follow-up, we'll send them through Wyatt to the school board and get responses back, all right? And one thing I'll just, as far as the calendar goes, mention to my fellow council members, we are running quickly up to the time that we need to make some decisions on the budget, so our first workup is coming up on April eleventh, so, we need to start talking dollars and cents before that, and starting to sort of land on the eleventh, it should not be the point that we begin to have the discussion on the eleventh, or we're gonna find ourselves in a world of hurt, so I've put it out there, what, what council members choose to do with the time that we've allocated, I can only set sort of the, the, the stage and provide the time and time on the meeting calendars, but people need to start talking dollars and cents.
Mr. Mayor, I would say humorously, there are many different kinds of landing. I'm hoping for a smooth one. I just wanted to say, as a matter of scheduling, I'm secretary treasurer of the Northern Virginia Transportation Commission, so I'll be there for part of the night on Thursday night, and then next Monday during our meeting, I'll be returning from Houston, Texas from a business trip, I'll be at the meeting, but probably late, thank you, and thank you for everyone here.
Anything else on the calendar before we turn?
I'll, I'll be out Monday.
Monday, Ron's out Monday.
I'll be here Thursday.
Okay, any other, anything else? So, Susan, if you can just, or, I'm sorry, Cindy, if you can send us the updated calendars. Okay, anything else by Wyatt or Cindy?
We do have one other item on the agenda.
We do, we didn't get to it?
This is the BB gun, what?
Oh, yes, my favorite, my, it's my, it's my item. Actually, this, this, some of the school members may wanna listen into this discussion, because it, it does actually involve youth in our community and, and schools, so we would certainly value your, your viewpoint on this, so... And for the benefit of the council members, this was an issue that was brought up by one of our citizens, one of our younger citizens actually wrote me a letter, I responded back, I'm trying to come up with ways that we can improve the ordinances and protect our kids, so...
Okay, Mayor Baruch and members of council, this is here at the request of council, you recalled that there was an incident a few months ago where a juvenile in the city was hit by, apparently by a BB gun pellet fired from private property into the public right-of-way, and so I drafted an ordinance at the request of city council that regulates pneumatic guns, BB guns are a subset of pneumatic guns as defined in the Virginia Code. What this ordinance does, again, based on state code authority, is it regulates the use of BB guns on both the public areas of the city as well as on private property. In summary, pneumatic guns, the use of pneumatic guns is banned in public areas of the city, given its semi-urban environment, use of pneumatic guns is permitted on private property subject to some specific conditions, and those are that a juvenile under the, the age of sixteen or below needs to be supervised by a parent or guardian, and any minor using a pneumatic gun in violation of the restrictions of the ordinance, or any adult for that matter, would be subject to a class-three misdemeanor, which is a $500 fine, again, under Virginia statutory authority, that's the maximum fine that we could impose. Now, there are also other requirements in the Virginia Code that we have to follow, and that is pneumatic guns will still be allowed at facilities approved for shooting ranges, they will also be allowed to be used on private property with the permission of the adult owner, so long, again, as reasonable care is taken in their use and operation. And again, a failure to exercise reasonable care in the use of pneumatic guns under this ordinance would be subject to class-three criminal penalty, so, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Council members? Ms. Barry?
I presume a pneumatic gun just simply means anything that's, that's, that propels a, a missile with, with compressed air?
That's correct.
So, a potato gun is also a pneumatic gun?
Let's look at the definition, Ms. Barry.
Absolutely, we...
Pneumatic gun means any implement designed as a gun that will expel a BB or a pellet by action of pneumatic pressure, it includes a paintball gun, that expels by action of pneumatic pressure plastic balls filled with paint for the purpose of marking the point of impact. Now, I note that potato gun is not mentioned, I don't think that a potato would qualify as a BB or a pellet.
Well, we, you know, we got to keep the tubers, you know, licensed, just because you, I mean, technically, I suppose you could get a little potato that big, but I'm just wondering.
Big balls, potatoes.
That's not pneumatic, is it?
I, I think the notion behind this is anything that's gonna potentially not to say that a potato can't, but potentially cause injury.
Yeah, I mean, just to bring it back to the incident that, that brought this, you know, to, to a head, the juvenile who was walking down the public right-of-way sidewalk in the, in the city, apparently, according to the correspondence we received, was hit by a BB filed, fired by another juvenile on private property who was not being supervised by his parents, and so this, this ordinance would address that situation.
Other council members? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, I'd support this, the irony is, of course, we probably have less authority to control assault rifles.
That's correct.
Mr. Foster, do, have other localities also adopted something similar to this?
I know Fairfax County has, I can do, I have not done a, you know, a statewide survey, I, I could, if you'd like, prior to first reading.
I wouldn't say it's statewide, unless it's readily available where you can pull it, I don't know if you've got, you know, I, I'm not asking for more than ten minutes.
I can talk to some colleagues online and find out.
Just very quickly, I, I don't, this is, shouldn't be a huge research thing, just to respond, and if it is, we don't need to do it. Mr. Callen?
I, I support it, too, I just have a question, I mean, we all know how well-behaved teenagers are, I can't imagine a teenager going out and doing this without their parent's permission or, or a guardian's supervision either, what happens, are there any sanctions, what's the result if somebody's firing, there's a fine?
It's a class, it's a class-three misdemeanor under the ordinance, again, as authorized by state law, and that's, that's a maximum of $500 fine.
I think Mr. Callen's point is if it's somebody below the age of maturity, you know, does it, say, under sixteen, without a parent knowing about it, does, does the minor get the fine? Who gets the fine?
I think the minor could definitely be fined, I'd have to look into, you know, whether the parents could also take the hit.
No pun intended.
No pun intended.
Just as long as we're not spending 170 bucks to put them overnight at the Arlington detention facility, so...
I got a question, so, but this actually doesn't technically prohibit people from shooting BB guns in the city, correct? I mean, you could go, for example, in your backyard and have a hay bale, hay bale with the target on it, and an adult with this kid could be shooting in the backyard, correct?
Absolutely, and that's a key point, I mean, the Virginia Code that authorizes localities to adopt this ordinance is very clear, that you cannot regulate use on private property beyond, again, making sure, requiring that, that use on private property, the projectile does not leave, you know, and go beyond the, the borders of that private property out into the public way or, or onto adjoining property, so, the hay bale, the hay bale in your example would, you know, would be a way to address that.
It doesn't even require that it doesn't leave the property, you just have to take reasonable care that it doesn't, so, for example, if you had the hay bale, you had a target, and somebody shoots, you know, the wrong way...
And that would be the issue as to whether the hay bale was reasonable care or not, that's right.
Gotcha, okay, thanks.
Anything else? I just, I know that we've got the chief here, I don't know if the chief had any comments about this.
I believe in second reading, we're gonna bring Jonathan.
I believe in second reading, we're going to bring Jonathan and Christine Buckholz to the second reading to show process. And we support this. Obviously, anything that we can do to reduce, and it is gun violence in the city. I know specifically Mrs. Buckholz was pointing towards adult supervision and property lines in this case. And we were very fortunate that Jonathan just took one right above the eye and wasn't seriously injured. But we support it, and we look forward to the second reading.
So it sounds like you have been in communication with the family, and this is sort of the, I mean, since they raised it to our attention, this is sort of the direction that they were suggesting as far as the parental supervision. I know that this addresses other areas as well.
As you recall, probably Mrs. Buckholz came to council and expressed her concern about supervision and property lines. And additionally, she came to the forum for the legal women voters when we talked about school safety, again, raising the question as to where it was. We told her it was at the roundtable when it was, and that would be presented to you in a few weeks. We've reached out to them again to ensure they can come back to second reading, and Jonathan can see actually his ordinance in progress.
And again, I wish, oh, great, we do have one of our school board members here. I think this is an area where we definitely want to hear from the parent community as well, because this can't happen without them and what we're trying to do. So if the school board can help, you know, facilitate some of that discussion and just let the parents and the school community know that this issue's coming up, either Monday or whenever the council chooses to put it on the calendar, I think that would be helpful.
Mr. Mayor, with your lead, would you ask a question?
Yep, if you don't mind grabbing a mic.
If I just ask the city attorney, in the absence of this statute, would the victim be without legal recourse or this ordinance? Would the victim be without, would there be tort or other remedies available nevertheless?
You know, I can't give the victim, in this case, specific legal advice, but generally I can say that there might still be a tort cause of action on the civil side of court. But without this statutory authority from the Virginia General Assembly, we would not be able to adopt this criminal ordinance. Nonetheless, you know, he, as I mentioned, would, I think, still, generally speaking, a victim would have a cause of action in tort.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, council, is this ready for at least first reading on Monday?
Yeah.
Okay. Shields, if you can let Tony know and just ask Tony that, you know, to the extent that they can just make the public and the school community specifically aware that we're going to be taking this up Monday, I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
All right, anything else, council members? Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move adjourn.
If I can get a second, that's Dave on the first, that's Mr. Callen on the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thanks very much.